Winchester Select Board for Monday, September 27th, 2021. I'm Susan Verdicchio, Chair of the Select Board, and I'm here with my... We're getting some feedback from somebody. If everybody could stay muted, that would be helpful. Thank you. So I'm here with my colleagues, Mariano Goliath, Rich Mucci, and Mike Betancourt, and Town Manager Lisa Wong, and many other town staff. I've wanted to announce that we have some meetings coming up in October to try to get work done in preparation for town meeting in November. We have meetings on October 4th, October 18th, and then on October 25th, excuse me, October 25th as well. And I have no chair report tonight. I don't think we have any committee updates. And I wanted to move right into the, just to do the acceptance of donations, please.
I move that we accept a donation of $928.06 from the property room for the auction of abandoned/unclaimed property to be deposited into the Police Department's gift account, and also accept donations in the amount of $1,000 from ANCA Society for the Public Safety Memorial with the board's gratitude to the ANCA Society, and also accept two ARPA Stabilization Grants the Recreation Department's September dispersment, one in the amount of $16,333.33 to be used for the RAP Kid Connection, and the other in the amount of $5,633.33 to be used for the Lynch After School Program.
Second. Okay, there's a second by Mike. We need a roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Just quickly to go through the Town Manager's report, Lisa, please.
Great. Good evening. First, I just want to acknowledge that this will be my last Winchester Select Board meeting as Town Manager, and I want to thank you for the opportunity over the last three years. There is a written report that is included in the packet, so I won't go through all of this and just touch upon a few highlights. First is that the sustainability grant that the town was able to receive from MAPC last year, we were able to get an extension for that grant from November 30th to March 15th, so that enables us to save another $26,500 in the town budget. And we have a Sustainability Director, Ken Pruitt, that will be starting on October 12th. So we'll be able to give him some more time for the deliverables and also obtain some more money for about three and a half additional months. The MBTA project, which I will be discussing further in the agenda today, but just wanted to let you know that that project was bid $7 million higher than the MBTA had estimated. And that includes various line items the town had intended to fund, and we'll be discussing that issue later on today. There's a new business downtown, Branch Olive Oil, so welcome to the owners. That store is downtown. There is another COVID testing clinic tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Town Hall Auditorium. There are several updates from the Engineering Department, including the Swan Street Culver that was delayed till mid-November. We have the Church and Waterfield Intersection Project that's been awarded, and that work will start in mid-October. There are some projects that are out to bid, including the North Reservoir Spillway Project, and then the North Reservoir Dam Project we bid in November. Free cash was approved today by the Department of Revenue. So those numbers have been provided directly to the Select Board, and I included in the memo what last year's amounts were as well, so you could see the upward projection. Just want to thank the organizers of Town Day, who had a great event with several thousand people coming downtown, not this past weekend, but before, the weekend before. Also today, Dusty sent out a notification that the mask requirement in schools will be extended till at least November 1st, with some caveats, excuse me, with some caveats that vaccination rates for students and staff are over 80%, then on October 15th, that school can be exempt from that mask requirement. I also have a few appointments. So in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, and in accordance with the Rules and Regulations of the Department of Personnel Administration or Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I have made the following permanent full-time appointments in the Fire Department to Owen Babinow and Sean McShee, the firefighter and paramedic position, and I respectfully request that the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the customary 15-day appointment period for Owen Babinow and Sean McSheeney for the firefighter and paramedic positions.
Susan, you're muted. Yep, I see that. Sorry. So we need a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
According to Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Town Clerk's Office, Principal Clerk, to Morgan Ray Hunt of Malden, and respectfully request the board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the customary 15-day appointment period for Morgan Ray Hunt of Malden for Principal Clerk at the Town Clerk's Office.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And is that it, Lisa?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I?
Yes.
Susan, can I say something? Yeah. So Lisa, I just want to say, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last three years, and thank you so much for your time. I think this last report that you've given us, you know, shows some of the amazing work that you've done. When you came onboard, we were, we passed an override that we were talking might last two years, and here we are three years later, and our reserves are higher than you were. And as Town Manager, the Charter gives you the, you know, the responsibility for the budget, and you've done a fantastic job there, and you leave us in a better financial situation than we were when you came. And then the MBTA, the train station, the fact that that went to bid and bids came back when you came onboard, you know, it had been 10 years of working with the MBTA and through your leadership that got over the goal line. And I know we will, we will miss you here in Winchester, but best of luck in your future. Thank you.
Yeah, I left a little note for Lisa earlier. I wasn't sure how to do all this in a virtual meeting. I would like to just, you know, echo what Mariano said. I would also point out that, you know, you've been a fresh, a breath of fresh air. You brought some new perspectives and new approaches to town government that I'm sure we will carry on. And I would also point to the fact that we have made, you know, some great strides in our, sort of our human services, understanding our human services sector, you know, and in our town government, and that, my hat's off that we have actually hired the mental health clinician for the Police Department. I think that's a great innovation as well. So thank you, and I wish you all the best and every success in South Hadley. All the best to your family.
I would just echo what everyone said. Good luck, Lisa. Thank you for your service to the town. Best of luck in South Hadley.
Yeah, likewise, best of luck, Lisa, and thank you for your service, and especially through a couple tough years, as Mariano was saying, but also the pandemic was not an easy time to lead the community and our staff. So thank you very, very much for your service. Again, best of luck.
Right. All right. So I would like to take some of these business items out of order just for efficiency and to respect everybody's time. I'd like to do, just quickly do the, I'm going to stop saying quickly, just start with the committees, and actually, I want to start with the Acting Town Manager item first. We discussed this in executive session. We voted earlier this month to appoint Beth Rudolph as our Acting Town Manager, subject to mutually agreeable compensation. And we've discussed the compensation package both for Beth as Acting Town Manager and for the extra, sometimes extra work, extra time and extra work on the part of the Controller, Assistant Town Manager, Mark Too Good, and blocking, sorry. That's it. Is that, and then, yes, that's it. I'm sorry. It's a team of three. It would be Beth Rudolph, Stacy Ward, the Controller, and Mark Too Good. So I'd be looking for a motion. Oh, we?
If you've I mean, I think, so we
I'm told we have to vote it in town in open session, so if you don't mind.
Oh, we have to vote in an open session. Okay. Mike, do you have the motion in front of you? If not, I can find it.
I apologize.
Does it have to be exactly, or can we free-form this, or as we did in executive session? I don't know. Anybody can weigh in?
I think we could just confirm the vote we took in executive session.
So I move that we approve the compensation request for Beth Rudolph, Stacy Ward, and Mark Too Good as outlined in the memo in our packet and presented to the board and as voted in executive session.
Second.
And a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Sorry for being a little ragged. But thank you, and thank you, Beth, for being here. So now I would like to move into the the committee and commission's appointments, because it's important to respect the time of people who want to volunteer to serve our town. And we have two people who are applying to the Climate Action Committee, Joshua Bears and Go-Pal Ragavan. If they're here, I'd be like them to be able to, you know, be elevated to speak, and I would, you know, we have some materials on both of you, and you both seem very capable, and I'm very grateful that you want to serve the town. We'd love to apply, to appoint both of you, but we can't. And I just encourage you to keep, keep trying, and, you know, the town needs lots of volunteers in various capacities, and I would encourage you to, you know, apply to something else in some other capacity. So I guess I'll take this in the order that's on the agenda. Maybe Josh, if you had, you know, a couple of things you wanted to add to your application, or just let us know of your interest in the Climate Action Committee.
Sure, yeah. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone here. I was actually applied, I think, about a year ago when the committee first was looking for members. And didn't get selected at that time, but Ruth Tremarchi from the committee reached out to me saying there was some open seats. Again, I guess a few people had a one-year term, and so I'm very interested still in joining this committee. And, you know, I think my experience with sustainability is in a couple areas. One is my work. I'm a Business Systems Analyst, and for Akamai Technologies, a internet company in Cambridge. And I look at the consumption of power by our servers all over the globe, and we model sort of carbon emissions and look at ways that we can offset some of those as part of the analysis that I work with. And in a place of worship that I was part of in Winchester, I was on a green committee there that looked at going back away from disposable dishware and flatware, back to glass plates as a way of promoting sustainable ways of being as a community, and that was a successful launch of that project after doing some analysis of the options. So I'd just like to say, I'd like to bring my analytic skills, computer skills to this committee in a way that can help serve the town. I think it's obviously an important problem for our future. I have a second grader at Lynch School, and I've been in the town about four years, and excited to hear about the hiring of Sustainability Manager. I guess he was in Arlington before, which is the town I came from previously. So that's what I'd like to share with everyone here.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone have any questions for Josh? Maybe not? Okay. And now, Go-Pal, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Please help me. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about yourself and your interest in climate action? We do have some materials from you, but, you know, just please let us, you know, get to know you a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you for the invite. My name is Go-Pal Ragavan. I'm resident of Winchester. For 10 years, I'm a Director of Software Engineering at your technologies, primarily focusing on providing webless navigation for various automotives as well as other enterprise industries, trying to find efficient ways to route people so that they use less energy, providing easy ways to access to EV charging stations and access to urban transit, as well as figuring out ways to do pollution mapping. These are all some ways in which I'm already trying to help continue through the organization. I really, at the heart of it, I care about the environment, trying to make choices for myself to have a low-carbon footprint, be it traveling, cut down on travel, or have more energy-efficient options at the home. Now, I'd like to take the next step, because I would like to make much larger impact. I see a lot of good activities happening around this area with the Climate Action Committee. My deeper interest and expertise in data analysis, actually large data, I kind of analyze the, you know, both 15 billion data points a day. So some of those come in handy trying to help this organization as well. So what I'm looking for is, you know, the areas that excite me are GR4 objective of our women's, trying to preserve trees and protect trees. That kind of stood out to me. And then I'd give you one goal of energy efficiency for existing buildings, which are contributing to 5% of the greenhouse gas emissions. So then there are a couple more in the goals that are very closely matching some of my interests. So I am hoping to be part of this community and help out, you know, achieving this 25 people.
Thank you. Again, I just thank you both for volunteering, and this is a very important issue and initiative for our town. And, you know, please stay involved, even if you weren't appointed to this. Does anyone have a motion or a nomination?
I want to nominate Josh Bears for the Climate Action Advisory Committee position, and thank you both for applying. And Josh, I appreciate you coming back there. It's great that we have so much interest in our community in these positions. And as you can see, it's a very active committee, and so thank you for reapplying and hope to hope we can move it forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I will second that. I will say, you know, climate change is the biggest issue that we face as a generation. And I'm happy to see that we have two extremely qualified people applying for this position. And, you know, to me, the tiebreaker is that it's Josh's second time applying for it. And so Go-Pal, please apply again when we have another opening, because we will in this committee or others. And I would like to see you apply again, because I think both of you are extremely qualified. So I second that, and I thank both of you for applying.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and look forward to working together.
Any other nominations? Well, I would say I personally would support Josh Bears, because, yes, as Mariano pointed out, this is his second go-around, so I'd be in favor of that. Rich?
You know, I agree with what everyone said. I appreciate, you know, both of you applying. Reading through your resumes are both very impressive. It's great to have, you know, people like yourselves willing to volunteer for these positions. So I thank you both, and like my colleagues, I think the tiebreaker here goes to Josh, because it's his second time applying. So I hope it doesn't discourage you from applying again. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Great. Thanks, everybody. That's, and welcome, Josh. Thank you. Thank you both.
Susan, do we need to
Yes.
reappoint?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I move that we reappoint Jason Roder to the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire August 31st, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you for catching that. And then we'll have the student position next time. So that's when they can all make it. So I would like to next move into the Senior Circuit Breaker, which is being presented by is Dan McGurl? Yes, by Dan McGurl.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I sent you up an email, a letter last week on this being the first year of the Home Repetition for us. We've had about 19 people successfully apply at this point. We still have a few more days for people to apply. We're doing it. And in the letter, as I said to you, they can get anywhere from 1150 is what the state allows as circuit breaker, and you will decide what they actually get based on your vote. You will vote a percentage of the 1150, whether it's 50% of that, 100% of that, up to 200%. It's your call, not mine, or ours, the board, I should say. And we'll do this every year. There's a point where the state may make this state statute, and it will become law in fact, and then they'll have a certain number, but it hasn't been as of yet. It's still Home Repetition, so it's up to you to make the calls of what the vote will be. So the question is to you, is what percentage of the 1150 you want to give taxpayers back? Is it approximately 19 at this point? And I mentioned in my letter, there is always the issue, and this has come up in other towns, next year when people reapply for this, depending on how much they get, what they make this year in income and so forth, and taxes, they could lose out on the circuit breaker through the state and also lose out on us. But we have no idea to tell which way to go on this, because we don't know what other people make. Because what's happening is the state, they'll get the state circuit breaker by paying more than 10% of their water and real estate taxes over their gross income. So this year, if we reduce their taxes by, say, 1150, it may put them under that amount. So next year, they may not qualify, but we don't have an answer for that, because we don't know what people are making. It's only August. We won't see this data until next year sometime. It's always a chance we take, but it's better to help people while we can, and then we'll see what happens next year. And other towns I've spoken to, some people are in one year, then out the next, then in another year and back out. So that's about the best I can give you for information as to what you want to give back, what percentage.
So Dan, could you just clarify what that amount, the 1150 or whatever you cited? What percentage is that, please?
That's the, that would be 100% of 1150.
Okay.
You can double it or cut it in half, or whatever percentage you so choose. Most towns, the sum is between 100% to 150%.
And Dan, this is recouped by the rest of the taxpayers. Is that how it works? So there's still budgetary, no budgetary impact?
We don't have that many people applying at this point. So a penny in the tax rate is somewhere around, I forget the exact, around $50,000, $60,000 each year. So if you even if you gave 1150 to 19 people, you're only talking, give or take $20,000. So it really doesn't even affect the tax rate. So the only time it would is if it went up, we had a lot more people apply. You know, what happened is the rest of the town, the tax rate could go up a penny or two pennies, wherever the case may be, to make up the difference, to give them the exemption. But for this year, there'll be no effect on the tax rate.
So does anyone have, on the board, have any thoughts about the level to set this at?
Let's see, Mike has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with what the recommendation is from staff on this. I guess I had a question to Dan. How do we provide information about the tax credit to residents? Is that with a mailing, or do we do outreach? Have we identified a specific group through the COA?
We do several of those things. We did a newsletter through the JENX. We put in the newsletter, and the tax bills will go out. And the people who actually qualify for other exemptions here in the office, we also mail them applications.
Okay.
And the other ones on the town website as well.
Great, thank you.
So I would be fine with anywhere between 100% and 150%.
Rich, any thoughts?
I agree with everyone.
Yeah, I'm thinking 100% seems to be the way to go, at least for now. See how it works out.
Yeah, so I move that we that we set the, what is it, the circuit breaker tax exemption to 150% of the state circuit breaker, which for this year would be a a credit of $1,150 off the state income taxes for those who qualify and have applied.
Second.
Intervene for one second? Said it correctly. The amount is 1150 at 100%. I believe, and I may be wrong, I thought you said 150%.
Right. I said 100%. That's what.
I'm sorry. I thought you said 150%.
Oh, you might have said 150, actually.
150, Mariano.
Oh, I said 150. I thought Susan said 100, so I said 100. But if everybody's okay with 150, I'm okay with either one.
Wait, I thought the motion was, I was okay with 100. I thought the motion would be for 100. I'm not sure what I heard.
Okay, so I meant to say 100% and $1,150, but if everybody's okay with 150%, then I'm okay with that as well. Can we take a sense of the board?
I was okay with 100%.
Okay.
I guess what's the difference, Dan, again, you know, just to make sure that we're clear at?
At 100%, it's 1,150. At 150, it's 1725. So about a $575 difference.
Okay. I mean, I'm comfortable at 150 if that's
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so since the motion wasn't seconded, I'll make it again. So I move that the board grant a real estate exemption of 150% of the state circuit breaker, which for this year results in an exemption of $1,725 of the property taxes for those who qualify and apply.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so at this point, I'd be looking to have Swim Winchester. If Caroline Shamu is available, I believe she's here for Swim Winchester. Swim Winchester is on a cycle with us to report to the Select Board every September. And so Caroline is the new president after having served for Vice President, as I understand it, for a couple of years at least. Caroline has now become president of Swim Winchester, and she has an update for us.
Okay. So thank you, Susan, and thank you to the Select Board for making time in the agenda for this update. I hope you can see my slides that I've shared.
I can see them.
Okay, great. There, there's only four content slides, four slides total, and I'll keep this brief. I've already provided them to Patty, and so you should also have them available to you, if not already, very soon. So I thought I'd start by detailing our progress over the last six months since our last report. We've continued to work with Isaac Sports Group, which is also supported by Water Technologies, Inc., to produce an up-to-date feasibility study for the Aquatic Center. Phase one work included analysis of design and programming for the center, where we spent a lot of time meeting with focus groups and where we spent a lot of time meeting with focus groups and potential partners to get a community input about design features and programming interests. The second phase has been a financial analysis, and it's winding down now, where Stu has estimated operating expenses for the facility, as well as potential revenue from memberships and programming. A highlight in the last six months was actually just in the last week or so, when Stu visited us from Ann Arbor, September sixteenth to nineteenth. He made multiple visits to Skilling Field and took tours of the town and surrounding areas to look at local, other local facilities. He also had many in-person meetings with stakeholders and potential partners. And he kept it all off on the eighteenth at Town Day, where he spent most of the day meeting the members of the community in our Swim Winchester booth. So the main takeaways from the feasibility study are summarized on this slide. With regard to the design and programming, the suggested design includes two pools, a lap pool of twenty-five yards with eight lanes. It would be relatively lower temperature. And this would be for laps, training, competition, active and deep water fitness, and of course, lessons and recreation. Then the second pool is a program or leisure pool that would also have a current channel that you could swim against in one part of the pool. And it would be relatively warmer, suitable for lessons, fitness therapy, low intensity laps with a twenty-yard lap lane, and for family-friendly recreation. In addition to the two pools, there'd be small fitness and workout area to support the users. For example, while you're waiting for a swim class to end, or, or perhaps have children there, you could work out. There would also be a single community accessible meeting room that would support aquatic programs, you know, for example, like the classroom portion of lifeguarding class or something like that. At this point, the estimated construction cost is around twenty million dollars. The financial analysis is still underway. It will be wrapping up. And at the moment, though, I can tell you that the draft operating model and the budget include an annual contribution to long-term replacement and maintenance fund. The budget shows that it should be, the facility should be self-sustaining by year three of operation. And at the same time, the membership and fees and use fees are reasonable and affordable, and include discounts for Winchester residents. So Stu's writing up his final report now, and summarizing both Phase One and Phase Two. And he's also going to provide a more concise version that we can post publicly on our, on our website and share with you. And I'm happy to answer details about any, I just don't tend to go into a lot of detail today. So then my final slide addresses the projected timeline and next steps for the project. So this fall and winter, we're gonna have a request for proposals process to choose an architectural design and engineering team that will carry out additional analyses and produce some advanced concept drawings for the facility. And so then we hope that sort of in the next, next nine months, we'll have sort of further design development and drawings and refinement of that design, more completed engineering and technical analysis of the building, including studies about site constructability and also environmental analyses. And I just wanted to note that thanks to the generosity of our donors and all the community support over, over the many years that Swim Winchester's been around, the funding is already in place for these, these studies and design. And then on an ongoing basis, we continue communications and partnerships with stakeholders and the town. And we are really ramping up right now, planning for our capital campaign. So thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions either now or certainly as follow-up by contacting me via email. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline. I know that this project has been going on for a long time, and that you've done a lot of very detailed work, and you're now getting to the point where you're going to put out an RFP to actually design the project and let people, you know, see how it's really going to work and really look. So thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Anybody on the board?
Yes, Mike?
Oh, Mike again. Yes, sorry. I can't see the screen very well. Thank you for raising.
Okay, I'll try to throw up a hand. But yeah, thank you, Caroline, and just to extend to Swim Winchester and your group, we appreciate that we kind of set out this requirement that you update us on a regular basis. And with everything else going on, you guys really stay true to that and come back to us. And so it, it means a lot, and also your engagement with the neighborhood. I think there's, you know, there, there's some, some friction there that will, will always kind of be there with, with the project and moving forward. But, and you know, we've heard from some of the neighbors as well recently as we, as we do. So we appreciate your, your ongoing effort to engage with them and update them as well and to include them in the process. So just want to say thanks and and look forward to seeing the, the project continue to move forward at Town Day. As usual, there was a lot of traffic over at the Swim Winchester booth, so it was good, good to see that the, the interest is maintain, maintain a high level. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the board? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Caroline. And I know Swim Winchester has a website, and you're readily reachable by email, so thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I'd like to go into the item for the transfer station upgrade and fees. I know that some people on our staff have been working a full day and want to present this. And this is an important project for the town, so. It's Jay, Jay, I see Jay and Mark. Thank you.
I think Jim Johnson and Roger McPique are here as well.
Yes, that's true too. Yes, I see them, sorry. I know they're here.
Matt, Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Jay.
Good evening, good evening, our select board members. Once again, we're here to talk about upgrades of the transfer station. Tonight, we're going to give you a report on the station, transfer station revenue and expenses analysis. It's something we do every year to determine if we need to raise the permits in January. So we started this process probably last week, and we attached a spreadsheet that you got from us and a memo. And then the fiscal twenty-one revenue for the transfer station and the fiscal twenty-two expenses, budget include indirect expenses and the gap between fiscal twenty-two is about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three ninety-three. That's the deficit that we have with the indirects. Just to give you a little information, last year, we did the same process. It was approximately four hundred and fifty-six thousand at that time. We raised the regular permit from two thirty-five to two hundred and seventy dollars, as well as the smart permit from fifty-five dollars to seventy dollars. The commercial permit was increased from two thirty to two seventy, all which amount we closed the gap was about two hundred thousand dollars. So we, for many years, have had some deficits. One of the things I tasked was to look at the last time we had a level budget when it comes to indirects, and I believe it was fiscal nineteen again.
Yeah, it was break even.
It was a break even point. There's many reasons, the deficit, and I'll go through them real quickly. First is the town's cost per ton with the solid waste increase. It's over fifty percent from fifty-nine, sixty-one a ton in fiscal twenty to ninety dollars a ton in fiscal twenty-one. And with an annual three percent increase of a fixed rate over the next four years with rail operator, this amount approximately is ninety thousand in fiscal twenty-one and about twenty-seven thousand in fiscal twenty-two. The town's cost per ton for recycling increase approximately eleven dollars a ton in fiscal twenty to fifty dollars a ton in fiscal twenty-one, and then seventy dollars a ton in fiscal twenty-two. We expect to start negotiating with JRM in the next ten months after Town Meeting, and hopefully we can get these numbers decreased. Another few bullets that caused the increase, you know, we had union contracts over the past three years. We also had lots of equipment, front-end loaders, tractor trailers, attractors, and backhoe, had a lot of expenses that, you know, occurred over the past few years. So on a side note, like I said, it has, it's been a long time since we had a break even back in fiscal nineteen. So tonight, as we mentioned once before, we do have some recommendations that we feel we should, staff has agreed to do, and we think we should do all this. First, we are, we recommend eliminating the smart pilot program entirely at this point, effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. After eight years of offering both regular permits and smart permits, the DEP recommends offering one program to the other. We feel just getting rid of smart at this time while we're doing construction would be the best thing to do. As the director probably works, I'm not saying after we get the renovation done that we should not look at smart in the future. Hopefully, when we negotiate recycling contracts, we start seeing the numbers go down, we may want to do both smart, but doing both really doesn't work anymore. You know, so looking back at the results, there's some more bullets. This would result in an increase in revenue for approximately two hundred and forty-eight thousand with smart household increased permit costs from seventy to two seventy, and less the bag revenue cost of the bags. So we're, you know, to get rid of smart, we're going to gain about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. The other one, with the cost of recycling increase in the last two years is much, in some cases, more than the cost of solid waste. Smart is not effective at this once, at cost of the bags increased as well. Additionally, having one area of solid waste would improve the logistics and efficiency of the operation of the transfer station while the new improvements are being done. So at September thirteenth, Select Board meeting, we presented options addressing the debt service payment with improvements to the transfer station. However, we believe the first principal interest payment will not have to happen till fiscal twenty-four. Where only a band interest payment would be a hundred and ten thousand due to the, for, due for fiscal twenty-three. Recommendations. January first, two thousand twenty-two, resident permits, eliminate, with, eliminate, January first, two thousand twenty-two, resident permits, eliminate smart program and maintain the two seventy that we have for permits now. So there wouldn't be any increase to the ones that have the permit two seventy now. Then effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, establish the transfer station facility capital fee of twenty-two dollars for our household, households, which is projected to generate additional hundred and ten thousand revenue for the band payment due in fiscal twenty-three. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, increase the transfer station capital fee be of fifty-eight dollars to a total of eighty dollars with the above twenty-two increase. The eighty dollars fee is expected to raise four hundred thousand dollars toward the estimate five hundred seventy debt service for improvements. I know Mariano looked, and the select board looked at raising the fee from eighty to a hundred. We thought eighty dollars was a good number to keep as low as possible, so I was glad to see that we could get that done. That would leave us approximately a hundred and seventy short of the debt service payment for year through fiscal thirty-two. One other thing that we also can do is, we also believe that the commercial hauls should bear some of the burden as well. We have recommendations for the increase to some of these items in fiscal twenty-four. If you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer them. I know you also have, from the Assistant Town Manager, Mark Tugend, who did a phenomenal job on the financing of the transfer station. And I thank him a lot for doing that. Great job.
Right, so, so Mark, did you want to just provide a little background? Because we're trying to, you know, sort of cover two things, you know. Sounds like the smart program just isn't supportable anymore, but we're also looking at financing the cost of the improvements and, you know, at the, at the transfer station.
So I want to start off by saying that was a great recap, Jay. You actually covered probably half of the materials I was going to cover, so that's perfect. So, so as Jay said, you know, the first fee that would be set is the January twenty-twenty-two fee, which would be the elimination of the smart program. But we are recommending that we keep the permit fee at the two hundred and seventy dollars, which it is currently set at. As Jay also pointed out, the first band payment is due in fiscal twenty-three. It's interest only. It's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So what we're proposing is January of twenty-three that we increase the permit fee. And we identify it as a capital assessment, or we can come up with probably a little bit better language for it. That would be twenty-two dollars per permit. And by voting that now, it would allow the acting town manager to include that revenue estimate in, in her FY twenty-three budget estimate, or revenue estimate. So we are recommending, we're proposing that that twenty-two dollars fee be adopted by the board. So that takes us through FY twenty-three. The first P and I payment is fiscal twenty-four, and that's approximately five, estimated at five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And basically, that payment stays around five hundred and seventy thousand dollars from FY twenty-four through FY thirty-two, which is when it would drop down substantially, because after that point, you're paying for just the environmental remediation component of it. So with Jay's estimated fees here of eighty dollars at that point, which would be really the fifty-eight plus the twenty-two from the previous year, would generate four hundred thousand dollars estimated, which would be put towards the five seventy, leaving us with a deficit, I'll call it a deficit of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And, you know, at this point in time, I don't want to speak for the acting town manager, but we're a little reluctant to take on any additional costs on the general fund side, since we're in the process of putting together a, a three-year financial model. And we feel, you know, an eighty-dollar increase is a fairly substantial increase in the fee. Granted, it's not all happening in one year, but it would be over, you know, a two-year period or three-year period. So there are not a lot of other funding options here, is that we would suggest that the capital committee be asked to, you know, allocate a certain amount per year during this nine-year stretch, which would be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer, answer any questions anyone has.
Anyone on the board? I know that, you know, a lot of work has gone into this, and we've discussed it before, but you know, if anybody on the board has any questions that they'd like clarified, now is the time.
I, I don't have any questions on, on the proposal itself, but I know that, you know, I am looking for the capital planning and see what the opinion is on that. One, one thing is, I don't know if, and Mark, I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier when I read the memo, but I was just reading this and, and an idea came up. What if we added the capital fee, the facility capital fee of, let's say, thirty dollars starting this January? And then we appropriated that to the capital stabilization fund for the first year, when we don't need it for the transfer station, to, you know, so that the hundred and seventy thousand dollars doesn't take us much out of the stabilization fund, right? Essentially, we start saving up a little bit earlier in the stabilization fund. I don't know if, if that's something that we can do, Mark or Stacy, if, if, if that would be something that we could do, and maybe that would, you know, lessen the load.
I think, I don't want to, I think Stacy is on. I, I think, I believe there is a way to do that. It would have to be done at the fall. I think, I don't want to, I think Stacy is on. I, I think, I believe there is a way to do that. It would have to be done at the fall town meeting where it would be added to the recap and I think the funds would have to be voted at the same town meeting. Stacy, is that correct? Hopefully she'll come on. There she is.
I'm here. Hello. Good evening. We could just have, if, if, when we're preparing the F Y twenty-three budget in the spring, well, before the spring when we're planning, we could have an additional transfer to the capital stabilization fund as an appropriation like we do with the, the thirty thousand dollar boiler that we've, we've had some arrangement. So we could, assuming that we were going to raise this revenue and it's part of our local receipts, we could then just have an appropriation and a second motion in addition to that thirty thousand dollars that we send to the capital, we can send another, whatever the calculation is, we can send that to the capital stabilization fund as a separate article or, yeah, I would do it as a separate article because that's how we do the other one already. We could do that in the spring.
Yeah. So I don't know if the board would be willing to set up the transfer station facility fee, capital fee this, starting this January so that we can lessen the sting a little bit on the capital stabilization funds.
So just, just to be sure I understand, and then you go ahead. We would be sort of accelerating the effective date of that, that fee, just to start it in January rather than waiting.
Okay.
Waiting for a year. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So Stacy, your answer assumes it would be for the fiscal twenty-three budget, I think. I'm not sure. I don't want to speak for Mariano. Mariano, will you assume the fee would change in January of twenty-two?
Well, that's the only time we can change the transfer station.
You're right. Sorry. I was thinking of twenty-three. Yeah. We, we would have to, in order to budget that revenue, we, we would have to do like a free cash vote to send free cash over to the capital stabilization fund in anticipation of this revenue coming in in F Y twenty-three. I mean, I'm sorry, in F Y twenty-two because our recap is due this fall and, sorry, I was getting my dates all confused. It's very confusing. We're doing our tax recap and certifying our F Y twenty-two revenue this fall and we don't have an article. We could put an article on the fall town meeting warrant, but we would have to have a, I don't know if we're too late for that, Mark, but we would have to have that to, to count revenue for twenty-two that we hadn't anticipated. We would need to do it now. But we could do a free cash vote in the spring anticipating that, that transfer station revenue, whatever we got in, in extra, we could send that to the capital stabilization fund right in, at the springtime.
But that'd be a free cash appropriation at that point, right?
Yeah. And assuming that we would calculate how much this fee generated in revenue, we would know how much we collected and then we could do that. That would be the basis of the vote.
The trouble with having clever, creative people on the select board, they come up with these things at the last minute. Sounds quite reasonable though. Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Susan. I, I, you know, I'm just a little concerned about the timeline and, you know, kind of what we're kind of messaging to residents, you know, we, with taking away the smart program, you know, I think I mentioned this before that, you know, a, a lot of people, you know, make that choice for the smart program for financial reasons. So if we're taking that away at the same time that we're accelerating the, the fee to residents, I, I think it's a, it's a big, big jump all at once. I mean, I certainly shifting some funds to the capital stabilization fund make, makes sense, but I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned that it's, it's a lot happening very quickly. So I, I, I don't know if I'm understanding correctly.
So Mariano, just so I understand, you're looking to accelerate the fee of twenty-two dollars in January first, twenty twenty-three to this year?
January first, twenty twenty-two, so that we can put some money aside for that hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we'll be taking from the capital stabilization funds in later years. But I'm okay with not doing that if the sense of the board is that we shouldn't. So.
Yeah, I'm thinking the people who are going from the smart program to the regular program and the regular program is going up. It's kind of like hitting them twice. So I'd rather not do that.
I guess, and I agree with what everyone said. I guess I'm, I'm curious to hear what our, what Roger and Jimmy have to say.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Capital committee is very pleased that there is now a plan with a timetable and we're willing to work with the town and the board and the town manager under what they say, as long as it's within the financial perimeters of our budget capital and our stabilization. I think Mark was suggesting this come from the building stabilization account. For nine years, we'll make it work. I'm speaking individually because last meeting with capital committee did not have a plan. Now that we do, we will be voting on it Monday night and I, my personal opinion, it's a pretty good idea. We'll make do with funds. As you know, we can take as much money and would like as much money as the board is willing to give us. Roger, do you want to say anything?
It's all just money. Just so you understand what we're talking about doing is if you look at the, for the capital stabilization fund, if you're looking at funds available for use, inflows, less obligated debt service. We're talking about obligating at a hundred and seventy K a year, seven percent of that fund for nine years. So that's the equivalent, that's one point five million. That's the equivalent of a school roof or the, the, the garages that we know that we needed, the, the D P W complex or a couple of fire engines. So it's not a trivial amount of money that we're asking that fund to, to sustain. And it's going to have real impacts on the things that we get done. This may be our priority. That, that ultimately is a decision that you guys have to make.
Okay. I, I, I appreciate that. Appreciate. It's very serious. I understand. Yep. We appreciate you being willing to work with us on this transfer station project.
Thank you for including us. It's nice when everybody works together, get a common goal.
Yep. And I'm sorry I had to wait till eight thirty, but whatever.
Oh, that's not bad. That's not bad.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I move that effective January first, twenty twenty-two, we eliminate the smart program. We maintain the residential permit at two hundred and seventy dollars. That effective January first, twenty twenty-three, we establish a transfer station facility capital fee of twenty-two dollars for all residential permits. And that the select board resolves that based on the information contained in the memo dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-first from Jay Gill, Director of Public Works and the memo dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-first from Mark Tugend, Assistant Town Manager regarding transfer station fees. The board recommends the use of transfer station revenue and stabilization fund revenues, building and/or capital for debt service and other costs associated with transfer station improvements in fiscal years twenty-four, twenty twenty-four through fiscal year twenty twenty-three-two and commits to review this intention annually to allow for proactive planning on this project.
Second.
I'm sorry. I just have a question beforehand. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we need to vote the January first, twenty twenty-four fee increase at this point or are we, we waiting on that?
So the third thing I said was a replacement for that third because we don't get to vote right now on the F Y twenty-four. We only vote on the F Y twenty-two and F Y twenty-three.
I just want to make sure.
Thanks.
Chairwoman?
Yep.
Would you also want to include the commercial permit fee in the additional extension plus, because I think Mariano said in the residential fee?
You mean the, the extra twenty-two dollars?
Is this a, okay. So I would offer a friendly amendment to the motion that in the third clause that you mentioned.
I think it's on the, I, I think Jimmy means in the second clause on the twenty-two dollars.
I mean, I'm both of them, but the twenty-two dollar one to begin with and then the fifty-eight dollar one if you're going to vote on it tonight.
So I think the hundred and ten thousand dollars was on just residential fees, right? Or is the recommendation on all residential and commercial stickers or just residential stickers?
Jay? With five thousand permits, was that including commercial?
No, that's just, it's residential only five thousand.
Why, why don't we do this as a separate motion? But let's figure it out and then we'll do it as a separate motion. Are we, are we clear on it being a separate motion? So I'm going to call for a vote, which has to be roll call on the existing motion. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Go ahead, Nick.
So do we want to also put the twenty-two dollars in the commercial permits? Is that what we're, or are we talking about the increase in, because that's going to bring a lot less revenue than the increase in the commercial, you know, tonnage.
I, I think, I think, I think, Jimmy, I think it would be, it would make more sense to say that we would consider an amount to add to the commercial tonnage fee for the next, those two years and then, and then we'll have to do that. We, we need to just make some calculations. Is that?
As long as the commercial rate was included in capital improvement process and program, I'd like, I think that's fair. I just didn't hear anything really definite about the commercial rate because that will contribute substantially towards the capital improvement fund.
But, yeah, thank you. And I'm just thinking we need to do some calculations before we do any numbers, you know?
Yeah. Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just to let you know, on the commercial stickers, there's only about roughly about fifty commercial stickers.
I know.
What, what staff was looking for is raising the, the tonnage, ten dollars per ton per axylene. Can you read it off right now quickly?
Sure. The commercial waste tip fee by ten dollars to a hundred and sixty a ton. Household same, commercial mixed by ten dollars to a hundred and eighty-five and building and demo debris by ten dollars to two twenty a ton.
That's what we were looking to do.
That was about thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Effective on what date?
We said F Y twenty-three, I believe.
So we would revisit this in April or May then? That's what, I think that's when we usually do it for the tonnage, right?
We try to usually do it on January before spring town meeting.
Okay.
So Mariano, you feel comfortable?
I mean, we can raise it now or we can wait or we can direct the D P W to come back in January with recommendations for, since, I mean, it's not, I mean, I, I mean, I feel comfortable. I'll take notes on the numbers again if we want to. We want to do those numbers.
I think I would feel better doing that because it just wasn't within any of the materials that we had.
So can you repeat the numbers then that we want to increase to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
This was in the, in the memo two weeks ago.
Yes, two weeks ago.
Yep. So the commercial waste tip fee would increase ten dollars to a hundred and sixty a ton. Commercial household, the same, ten dollars, a hundred and sixty a ton. Commercial mixed by ten dollars to one eighty-five a ton. And the increase in building and demo debris would be by ten dollars to two hundred and twenty dollars a ton. And that's roughly about thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah. So I move that we increase the, the fees for commercial household and other commercial to, by ten dollars to a hundred and sixty dollars a ton. For commercial mix by ten dollars to a hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton. And for building and demolition, that we increase that to two hundred and twenty dollars a ton and that these increases are effective for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Do you mean effective January first this year? Or July first?
So I thought we were talking about July first, twenty twenty-three, right?
But we don't raise, right, but we don't raise fees mid-year. We raise them calendar year, not fiscal year.
We can, okay. Then we can make them January first.
Let's go January first, Madam Chairman.
So that we, that these fee, that the fee increases are as of January first, twenty twenty-two.
Does everybody understand that, the board?
May I ask a question? What, were the commercial fee increases included in the estimation of the one hundred and seventy K shortfall?
No.
No, it was not.
So we're really talking something less than one seventy K?
About a hundred and thirty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unless you want to stick with the one seventy K, Roger, we, we can.
We, we could use that money elsewhere.
So Madam Chairman?
Can I hear them? Yeah. I was going to say, let's finish this motion or, or defer it until another time. Mariano, it sounds like you have a firm grasp of the motion.
Yeah.
And, yep.
Yeah, it's commercial mix is a hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton. Building demo is two hundred and twenty dollars a ton and commercial household and the rest is a hundred and sixty dollars a ton. Effective January first, twenty twenty-two. That's what we discussed.
Okay.
Second, if that's the motion we want to put forward. If you need one.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, I, I think that's the way to go. So roll call, vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you, everyone on the select board. Just want to let you know, I always do this when we raise the water rates. So if you look at the average per week, it's really to the back pay is six dollars and seventy-eight cents. So that's another way to look at it.
The increase.
Yeah, the increase.
The increase. Yeah.
At the eighty dollars. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jimmy, and thank you, Roger.
Thank you for inviting us and have a nice evening.
You too. At this point, I, I know that, that there's at least one person here for public comment and we have time for five minutes of public comment. Again, this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to things within the jurisdiction of the, or the purview of the select board. It's not necessarily a dialogue. And if there are a group of you with the same message, I would ask you to appoint a spokesperson to speak. And we only have time for five minutes because we have so much on our agenda. So if there's, remember the public here for public comment, I see Pam Court has raised her hand and I believe there's, and Sam Allison has asked if she's still here.
She is. Sam's already in.
She's already in?
In the group. Yeah, she's already in.
I see her. Okay. So we're going to take Sam first and then Pam. Thank you. Go ahead, Sam.
I, I appreciate that and apologize for the darkness. I'm in a car outside of soccer pickup here. So I come to you as a precinct three town meeting member, a former member and chair of the finance committee. I was a member of the former superintendent's city, had past involvement in the school's master plan efforts. And I was also just wanted to join to quickly voice my support for the relocation of central house. I handed this school committee review of the architectural presentation back on September ninth. First, I just want to applaud everybody that's been involved to date. This has been a conversation for many years. So it's really great to see that plan. Oh, Chris, somebody's telling me to turn off my camera because, sorry, hopefully that's better. So just wanted to applaud the progress that's been made after so many years. Given my past involvement, I think that I have a pretty good sense of the options that are in front of the town and the different trade-offs. So I think there's many pros to utilizing the carriage house. As I'm sure you'll hear from the school committee, it'll provide the town with a central office location that is near but separate from the schools. It'll free up Parkhurst for better utilization of that learning space. It's obviously a great renovation of a historic building in town and a usage plan that makes a lot of sense for that location. And to me personally, the cost is pretty reasonable and a reflection of what's necessary. For those who struggle with that, I'm happy to share my personal experience recently with quotes for an addition to my house. And after all that, the carriage house is looking pretty good. I might ask to move in. Given that, you know, kind of memories. Given that, you know, kind of memories fade and there's been a fair amount of turnover in the participants of these discussions, I've made two suggestions to the school committee. Over the years, I've encouraged the school committee to really try to anticipate needs for growth. So I've made the same recommendation for central office and encouraged them to think about how they would expand if they needed to in the future within that space. And I've also encouraged them to put together a synopsis of the various options and pros and cons of each for discussion with town meeting when appropriate. So again, just wanted to reiterate my support for the carriage house relocation for the central office. And that's it. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Sam. I see Pam, Pam Court, can she be elevated to speak? Or elevated, sounds very formal, but if Pam, Ms. Court can be allowed to speak, please. Pam, I think I think I see you have moved over to speaking status. Says you're connecting to audio. Hi, Pam, I think we can hear you.
Hi, I apologize, I, my app either crashed or I don't know what happened, but.
Please go ahead, thank you.
I'm, I just wanna, I'm calling, I'm speaking to talk about the Waterfield Task Force Working Group. I know that they are going to be asking about time and extension of time possibly for them to submit their recommendations or their findings in their report. And I wanted to express some frustrations that I've experienced in watching those meetings. There are a number of members who continue to ask basic questions about things which they should know about. Every single member of that group volunteered to be a part of that group. There are other people who volunteered who weren't chosen to be a part of that group. And some of them are not doing the background research they need to do to have meaningful discussions. So a lot of the meetings are wasted asking basic questions which are answered over and over again. Things about how many apartments of what size, what the income requirements are for them, who's going to be living there. Really basic things. And it's frustrating to watch. And then it's frustrating to see them say that they're going to need more time when they're not utilizing the time that they have efficiently. And there are only two members of that group who have bothered to start to generate a report or a rough draft of that report. So I would urge you to not give them more time. They've had time, they, whoever is asking for more time or says that they desire more time has not used their time wisely. I'd also ask you to remind them that the name of your board is Select Board and that you are not the selectmen, but you are Select Board members. Because listening to that over and over again feels disrespectful. Finally, I want to remind everybody who's listening to this about who could use those affordable units. Because the issue was brought up of who these are available for people who are in town or who work for the town. And somebody said, well, why would anybody who already lives in town need affordable housing? Which struck me as incredibly insensitive to people who are of limited income in this town. They include teachers, there are several young teachers that I know that were living with their parents because they couldn't afford to live here and they didn't wanna have to do an hour-long commute to live in a community that they could afford on a new teacher's salary. And there are people who are living in apartments who either lose them because the rent goes up or the landlord is selling. There are elders who, for either the same reason or who can't afford the taxes and want to downsize and stay in the community. So there are a number of people in this community who could benefit. And it's just sad at this point. This was at the last Waterfield Task Force meeting. It's sad to hear them talking about who would need the housing. That should not be something that needs to be established, especially at this point. So I just wanted to express that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. That's all the time we have. I would remind everybody that I'm muted. I would remind everybody that you can always send an email to the select board members and to the town manager with any of your concerns and thoughts. So thanks. I wanted to turn now to the school central office relocation project. I know that there are folks here to answer questions and I, I understand that Chris Nixon has some slides. Just as a bit of background, the school committee is now working through the feasibility study phase of a project for Lynch and the long-term plan for all of the facilities, always included. Decision about possibly relocate or definitely relocating the central office administration out of the Parkhurst School, which they've been occupying on a temporary basis. When the decision point came about, I knew one of the, one of the two new elementary schools that we need, Morocco or Lynch. Also in that facility's master plan and the long-term plan was the identification of a possible relocation of the central office to the carriage house. And the decision would be made, do we, does it make more sense to relocate the central office out of Parkhurst into the carriage house? Or as part of the new elementary school? So a part of the new Lynch project. The school committee has, and the people working on the feasibility study have some, you know, some decisions that they have to make right away. And they've done a, an investigation and actually a design for possibly relocating the central office into the carriage house, renovating the carriage house and saving it, you know, as a historical asset of the town. And they are looking for a decision to be made on whether to move forward with the carriage house project or whether to move forward with asking the MBTA. MBTA is the wrong one. Asking the MSBA, the schools authority, the school building authority, whether it would be whether they would allow having the central office in the Lynch project. So with more detail on that, I'd look to Chris Nixon of the school committee.
Thank you, Susan. And what I'd like to do while I bring up these slides, if you or Patty could also elevate our colleagues from Hill International. Vivian and Andy, I think, are on board.
I'm doing that, everybody, right now.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right, so let me see if I can share a screen. I'm afraid I glitch from time to time like Sam did tonight. So if I turn the camera off, it's just to be sure that everybody can hear me. So then as we're, as we're waiting for these folks to come in, I wanna make a big announcement tonight that we're excited about. We hope that the town will join us on Tuesday, November sixteenth. We're asking you to save the date. This is our kickoff for the new Lynch Elementary School project. It's a day-long series of events. We look to start off in the morning at the auditorium at Town Hall, where community members can meet the team, learn more about the schedule. Our team members are eager to hear from citizens about what will make this project successful in their eyes. And after some afternoon work sessions with administration, town staff, and the Lynch PTO, we'll kind of repeat it all again in the evening at Winchester High School. And we look forward to working with WinCam to make that available live and recorded. I would like, Susan, I'm gonna introduce Vivian and Andy quickly and then ask Karen to make one other important introduction tonight. Joining us from Hill International are Vivian Barbadian, she's our project director, and Andy Voe is the project manager. Hill is what we call its alpha bet soup. They are the MSBA's OPM for this project, the owner's project manager. They have quite a bit of experience in actively working with districts right now and delivering school projects with the MSBA. We've had them on board for a while now. We do not yet have an architect and engineering team on board, but we will soon. We're in the midst of the sort of the final stages of the designer selection process with the MSBA. And we will have that figured out by November sixteenth. And we're excited about that news that's coming. May I ask Karen to make one other introduction of someone who's new to Winchester?
Sure, great, thank you, Chris. I just wanted to say I'm very pleased to introduce your board and to the wider community, Dr. Frank Hackett, who is our interim superintendent of the Winchester Public Schools. He brings a wealth of experience from his time in Braintree and Pembroke and Maine as a superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal, teacher, and coach. So, and we have appreciated very much his energy and his dedication to our staff and students and families and the community in this partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everybody, nice to be here.
Okay, so I just, I'm gonna go through, I think we just have four slides on some key metrics that we've been looking at. And Susan, appreciate your very helpful summary. I wanna be clear, this is not a replay of the presentation we had at the high school on the ninth or a follow-up discussion on the fourteenth. We're assuming that board members have had an opportunity either to see the report or to see the presentation or both. So I tried to kind of organize this carriage house on the left, a prospect of a new Lynch on the right to accommodate central office. And we'll go through this real quick. So we understand that the construction cost for relocating central office to a renovated carriage house is a little under four point four million dollars. And that's backed up by a very detailed schematic design estimate. There would be some additional money required for some supplemental parking. That's not carried in this construction cost since there are a couple of different design options we're evaluating right now. And we've looked at with the Historical Society. However, the cost of that, there is a hefty allowance carried for that that does show up below in the project cost, which comes in at five point nine five million dollars. Project cost includes all the contingencies and the parking and site work that I, that I mentioned. Importantly, there would be no reimbursement from the state for this project. Has nothing to do with Lynch. If we should go this route completely separate. And then we're gonna contrast that then on the right. The construction cost for Lynch, we're saying is kind of between around four point one to four and a quarter million dollars for the central office component. And I wanna be clear about where that comes from. We're, we've been estimating since the spring that the construction cost for the new Lynch, again, construction cost, not project cost, somewhere between forty-six to forty-eight million dollars. And that puts us kind of in the five hundred and five to maybe a little under five hundred, maybe five hundred and twelve dollars a square foot range, something on that order. Simply carrying those unit costs gives us an idea of what carriage house might cost at the new Lynch. As Tappe explained in their presentation on the ninth, it's really very difficult to make as concrete a comparison on a project cost basis. So many different elements drive project cost, architects, engineering fees, all sorts of testing that falls on the owner, your fixtures, furnishing equipment, educational technology, and of course, swing space. But at this time, Tappe does feel like they're comparable. And even though the Lynch project will be in partnership with the MSBA, they do not reimburse for central office space if and when they even allow it. So even if it should become part of the Lynch project, in either scenario, it's on our nickel. The timing piece, I think, is pretty straightforward to us. To accomplish the carriage house, we'd need to secure funding sometime in the spring. If we did that, we could complete design documents, get it out to bid, have substantial completion by the summer of twenty-three and occupancy by the following fall. But conversely with Lynch, as you all know, our goal for some time has been occupancy by students and staff by the fall of twenty-five, substantial completion that earlier summer. The funding for Lynch is a different animal. It's gonna be very similar to the high school in VO. It's gonna require a town meeting, I think we're looking at fall town meeting twenty-two, and then a ballot question, we estimate around January of twenty-three. So it's a two-step process. But if central office should actually be included in the Lynch program, then it's actually included in the Lynch vote, if you will. That's part of the project funding agreement. So it's not two separate questions, it's just one. I mentioned earlier the MSBA approval. The MSBA evaluates these requests for non-reimbursable space on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis. They've been explicit with us that we are not to assume that they would even allow it if we wish to send central office to Lynch. If the school committee should make that decision, we then need to work to prepare a series of presentations and make a case that Lynch is the best, highest and best opportunity for central office. And the MSBA would actually make a determination on whether or not they allow it about a year from now. Let's talk about challenges and opportunities. On the half-full side, moving central office to carriage house makes use of an existing school department asset under the control of the school committee. It has no impact on the planning and design priorities at Lynch. And we'll hear from Hill and Mr. Nardone, Jay Nardone is with us as well tonight from EFPBC about really kind of what that means. But it takes an important element sort of out of the mix on a very challenging site to accommodate a large building. There's certainly the cost avoidance element here as well. The devil you know versus the devil you don't. So we have a pretty detailed cost estimate. We'd be looking at bidding the work for the carriage house in twenty-two versus bidding the Lynch project somewhere between January or February of twenty-four. That's our current estimate. So there's a good two years of cost escalation there as well. Hard to predict what those quarterly increases will be, but they will be there. And then, of course, there's the swing space element. We've heard loud and clear from the architectural teams who visited the site, put together proposals and ultimately submitted for consideration. Real concern about how challenging the site is, whether it's just the irregularity of the site, the topography of the site, the hundred-year floodplain, or the required setbacks off of the brook. It's gonna be very challenging and multiple teams have expressed the desire for swing space. And so we have some indication from our friends at Hill that if we were to move central office out of Parkhurst, that would free up about two to three million dollars worth of swing space to help the Lynch project. In other words, we may need to find an additional two to three million dollars of funding for some measure of swing space. And of course, we have the opportunity to preserve a historic resource. On the Lynch side, I think the biggest opportunity that we all read is simplified process. So if central office should be included in a new Lynch with the MSBA's permission in September of twenty-three, this gets included in that project funding agreement. As I said, it's one ballot question, it's one question that goes to town meeting. And even though the site is very challenging, and this is a large building, it is, at the end of the day, still an opportunity for a clean sheet design. And we look at the challenges. So moving central office to the carriage house, being a totally separate project, separate pathway, and looking at the timeline requires a shorter runway to come up with that funding. Particularly if we believe that some measure of swing space is necessary to help facilitate the Lynch project or make it better in some respect. We're gonna have to find a way to get central office out of Parker. So the project needs to be complete before Lynch. And of course, we're gonna have some additional site traffic between seventeen to twenty FTEs there. Some of our staff are based there five days a week, some float throughout the district. That's definitely gonna bring some traffic as well as some visitors. There is the lease document between the town and the Historical Society Town Meeting previously approved that actually designates an area for expanded parking. We've been looking at that as well as the Historical Society and developing some options there. On the Lynch side, you know, if we're not gonna put central office at the carriage house and we say it's gonna go to Lynch, we assume at this time it's about six million dollars of added project cost. I wanna just underscore, we're talking project cost, whereas that forty-six to forty-eight million we've talked about previously is construction cost. I am quite confident that the project cost for Lynch is gonna be well over sixty million dollars. And many things will drive that number, continued cost escalation in the market. Ultimately, designing the building, the need for swing space, et cetera, is gonna further increase the cost of the building. We wanna do everything we can to minimize that. But in addition to cost, I wanna share with everybody that the current Lynch that today the MSBA has approved to accommodate up to five hundred and twenty students, that's a hundred more kids than what we had at VO when that building opened in thirteen. And in addition, an expanded pre-K, that that building does not accommodate right now central office at a little over eight thousand square feet. Including this in Lynch is gonna make that building nine percent larger. So then it just kind of becomes, it's kind of like building a ship in a bottle. Building a bigger ship in a bottle is just a little harder. It can be done, but it adds to the site and design challenges. Certainly could tip the scales in terms of swing space demands and can make it a little more difficult in the means and methods of construction. Of course, this would tie up Of course, this would tie up Parkhurst until '25, because the building would be occupied. And just like at the carriage house, yes, we'll have some additional site traffic. So, having sort of flown through that really quickly, wanna just make an observation about value. $6 million is a lot of money regardless of where, where central office might go. Today, the cost for designing, procuring and constructing modular classrooms in Massachusetts is around a million and a half dollars per classroom. Now, that's not rental, that's to do it permanently, that's for us to own it. So, for instance, like the two that we have at Ambrose or the two we have at Morocco. But modular classrooms are very expensive, whether you're doing it permanently or you're renting. And so I was trying to think, what's another lens to sort of think about value? We just spent a million dollars putting in an elevator at Parkhurst, and we did that so that we could capture four classrooms downstairs with daylight, where we now have our pre-K students who just moved over there from Lynch. In addition, we picked up gymnasium cafeteria space and some very helpful support space and bathrooms. So that comes out to about a quarter of a million bucks per classroom with all the support space that I just described. Upstairs on the main level of Parkhurst are 12 classrooms, plus the various bathrooms and support spaces. So if one says, we've already spent about a quarter of a million bucks per classroom downstairs, what, what are those is worth upstairs? It's a permanent home. And also minimize the need for swing space is something that's very appealing to us. I'll be quiet, I'm done with my speech, but I wondered if we might, Susan, open it up to our colleagues either from Hill or the superintendent or Mr. Nardone for some comments on opportunities and challenges.
What I, what I'd like to do is let, you've given us a lot of information already. So I just wanted, before we do that, and I'm, I'm glad everybody's here to answer questions and particularly, you know, the new superintendent who's been working all day and probably everybody else on the list. But I, I would like to just let the board ask any clarifying questions they might have first, if you don't mind.
Sure, and if you'd like me to go back to any particular slide, just ask.
Okay. I'm trying to scan to see if anybody on the board has their hand up. And I don't see anyone with a hand up for a clarifying question. So. Let's go ahead and hear, let's hear from, you know, the superintendent and, or, or, let's, let's hear from, from Jay Nardone, who's the head of the EFPBC, and I know he's, he's worked on a number of these projects or as, in his capacity as a member of the EFPBC. Been involved with a number of different projects, both, you know, MSBA projects and ones that the, the town has undertaken on its own, like the McCall expansion.
Good evening, thank you. You're right, we've been through a lot of these together. So, the project will not be funded by MSBA, like Chris has said. If we continue without a definite answer, for the next year, we'll be looking at two different projects with every, with the designers, everyone we speak to will be looking at a Lynch with or without central offices, it's really gonna muddy the water. We'd be better off having a clear forward, that we know that this is, a central office is not part of it, and the bidders, the architects, everyone could be working without it going forward. Just make a cleaner job, less confusing going for the Lynch. And there's, there's really no reason not to put it over there, out of all the slides and everything that Chris has put together. If anyone has a specific.
Okay, great, thank, thank you, Jay.
If, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I may interject, this is Vivian from Hill International. Since the project, the new Lynch project is in partnership with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, they do require early notification of any alterations to the original submission. So since the original submission for the new Lynch Elementary School was submitted as a standalone elementary school project and approved to go into the process as thus far, they would need immediate notification if there's any change to that proposed project. So knowing earlier on whether the administration building is going to be part of the new Lynch is crucial for this partnership to continue forward and as well as to set the project up for success for their impending approval later on. Also, what is necessary is as we're getting ready to make our selection with the architectural team, we also do, do need to notify them as well as their subconsultants and as they do the land surveying, the site surveying, and all of their testings that they take into consideration a building that is slightly larger than what was originally identified in the request for proposal. And the, it has also become very crucial, since you guys are much more aware than I am, that the site is extremely tight to begin with. And you do have a lot of other factors playing into the logistics of the site as well as the conditions. And having a building that is just even 9% larger makes it that much more challenging. Knowing it early on will be crucial for the success of this project. But Parkhurst, having that be emptied and the administration office moving to the carriage house will be crucial as the Lynch project moves forward, which allows us to have a lot more swing space. And by having the swing space, what we can do is be able to transition some of the student population into Parkhurst, minimizing the need for swing space. That doesn't mean that modulators will not be necessary, but we don't have to have 16 classrooms with bathroom facilities as well as, you know, swing space and modulators for the administration staff as well. If they can utilize Parkhurst, majority of those spaces will already be made available as well as bathrooms and cafeteria, gymnasium spaces that we would have to otherwise recreate in a modular setting. This makes it a little bit more attractive for the contractor when the bidding process is underway and ultimately assisting in a more kind of competitive pricing, because we'll have far more interest if the school would be vacant and more contractors would be willing and eager to bid on a project of that magnitude, especially if they can take over the site in its entirety without having to have it phased and work around students in an occupied space.
That's helpful, yeah, thank you, thank you. I guess the immediate question that, you know, Chris talked about when he, and the school committee talked about when they had their meeting on the, at the high school, I think it was on the ninth, I went to part of that, is, you know, to move forward, they would like to, they would need about $57,000 of additional funding to do the next level of the design drawings, so they can get a, a better understanding of the cost. And that's something that they are looking, that they've put on the, actually, they voted to put on the warrant for the fall town meeting that's coming up. But of course, that also anticipates, as was outlined, you know, in the slides, a debt exclusion to pay for the carriage house. And, you know, and to build it, you know, to really commit to doing, doing the work on the carriage house.
Can I offer a, just a clarification on that, Susan?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so, so, great work has been done to date by Tape. And the reason that the school committee has put this on the warrant is it, it acknowledges just what you said, to really get the job done, we're gonna have to find up to $6 million. We don't have that, and that's not sitting in the building stabilization funds, we acknowledge that. But what we wanted to do was be just extra prepared for that conversation about funding in the spring, that we can say with 100% confidence that that number is 5.95. Because this is schematic, Tape has made some frankly conservative assumptions. I'd be doing the same thing if I were in their shoes. So it's an opportunity in design development to not only hold that number, but see if we can even bring that down a little bit. Get a little more specific about the many assumptions and allowances that have gone in to date. So that if we've got that support, we can go out in the spring and, and say, we need, fill in the blank. If it's 5.95, great, if it's 5.8, great, but we need to know that, just to be so certain. It's really sort of taking this to a level of detail, a little more similar to what we did on the McCall expansion project. If you recall, that was a phase one and a phase two project. Phase one was about one and a half million dollars, that did not require a debt exclusion override. But phase two did require a debt exclusion, and that was around $12 million. So, just want to be sure we get it really, really right. Thank you.
Okay, so I see that Rich and Mike have their hands up, Rich, then why don't you go ahead? Rich Mucci.
Thanks, thanks, Susan. Dr. Hagg, your first welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight, I guess it's a baptism by fire here, the first, first go around the select board, but appreciate you being here. I hope you're off to a good start at the school year, and I appreciate your, all, all your hard work. Thanks, everyone, for your presentation, very thorough. I do have several questions, if I could ask. First and foremost, so, the swing space is necessary for Lynch. And I understand that, but what do, what do we, what are our projections looking like over the next couple of years for the elementary school levels? Do you have those available?
Do you mean, you mean enrollment projections?
Enrollment projections, yeah.
Yeah. Greg, what can you tell us about enrollment?
Sure, so I, I know that part of the, the question mark with the enrollment is the, are the, are the projects that are either on the books with the town, there are several housing projects, I believe, and I, I think Chris can speak or, or Karen can speak to this better than I can, but I know that they, there is an impact, a projected impact on Lynch with one of them. We are right now holding fairly steady, I think we're still kind of trying to figure out, let the dust, dust settle on the, the impact of, of the last year and a half or so with, with COVID. We've had, we did have some, some parents choose to enroll their children in private school for a variety of reasons, and Winchester's not alone. That's a phenomenon that happened everywhere. We are projecting that some of those families will make their way back. And, but we, you know, we're, right now, it's hard to say exactly what our enrollment growth looks like, and I have not seen an updated projection done by, you know, through like a cohort survival study to determine what our enrollment looks like on the longer term. But I know the MSBA was projecting this building, that they are, they were projecting enrollment growth and in fact, in, increase the billed enrollment number to accommodate that projection.
Okay, so I guess I'd be curious to see, I don't know when they become available, if it's this fall, I think, I think it's typically in the fall, just to see updated enrollment numbers.
So what, the October 1 is the official state date, and what I've learned over the years doing this for a while is that it's, that we're better off to talk about that enrollment date, because that's what's posted on the, that's the website, so that there's no confusion when people start checking our numbers, which ultimately people do, against what the, what the state has, has posted.
Okay, and then, the preschool, is the, is the current plan to relocate the preschool to Parkhurst and expand the program, or is it going to be going back to the new Lynch?
So there are, as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there are, the current design includes six classrooms, I believe, for pre-K, which does represent an ex- expanded pre-K potentially. For us, we would, we have four sections that are Lynch sections right now at Parkhurst, as was already mentioned in the, in what we call the garden level downstairs, accessible by the elevator. So it does give us an opportunity to expand pre-K, and I know that is of interest to both the community and the, and the school committee.
And if I can add to that, Rich, that, so that represents, it's a 20% expansion in pre-K classrooms. But remember, we, at, 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 as you, you and I were actually Lynch pre-K dads at one point, Rich. So we've got morning programs, we have afternoon programs, and we have all-day programs. So that will allow us to run at least two, up to two additional sections at, at Lynch. And I do have some of that housing information for you, I can share, or we can always follow up with an email, I just pulled it up.
Yeah, why don't we, do you mind following up?
That's fine.
Happy to.
So, so, it sounds like the preschool will be going back to Lynch, so I guess, after 2025, what is the plan for use of Parkhurst?
There, there isn't a long-term plan for Parkhurst, Rich. The, the master plan says, if we should continue to grow in a significant way, and we had explosive growth, you know, 10 years ago, we still grow, but not like we used to, we were just bursting at the seams. We don't believe in neighborhood elementary schools of 650 and 700 kids. And, and we've heard that loud and clear through redistricting and so many other, you know, key decisions along the way. But the master plan says is, if we should continue to grow, we're gonna need to talk about a sixth neighborhood elementary school. That's not today, it's not tomorrow, and that's well after we do Morocco. So think the new Lynch is gonna pick up growth by the fall of '25. We've publicly committed to a new Morocco between '28 and '30, that's also a bigger school, again, to pick up growth. If the need is there for a sixth neighborhood elementary school, it's at Mystic, because Parkhurst is in the wrong place. You could throw a baseball and hit Ambrose from, from Parkhurst. So geographically, Mystic is what makes sense. The school committee could, you know, after Lynch completion, have a conversation about surplusing the building back to the town. And we have a new rec department director who might be excited about expanding rec to pro, rec programs at Parkhurst. That's now practically a fully accessible building, you know, with the elevator and so forth. So there's an opportunity for rec to generate revenue, we could be renting the space there. But there are no long, long-term plans for Parkhurst beyond the completion of Lynch, that's just the most direct answer.
It, it is, it is wasted on the central office, I mean, just as an example, I mean, I'm, I'm in an office that is at least 800 if not 900 square feet. And because we can't, the ceilings are high, we can't break up the spaces efficiently, so we are spread out on that first floor in, in a way that we have to be, because we don't really have any other options. But it, it's not designed or really meant for a central office. And I'm, you know, it's not lost on me that spending $6 million on a superintendent's office is not what people really want to do. It's not, really, what would lead with that is the selling point, the superintendent's office is potentially 6 billion. But you, you, the point is, we need the swing space, swing space is gonna cost us money either way. And candidly, you know, I mean, I'm new, so I'm not, I'm not emotionally invested or invested really in any of this in terms of ju, other than just trying to make it work, and I've done a lot of projects. And I can tell you, I've not seen a site that is tighter than the site at Lynch. And I'm really concerned, as I, just as we kind of look through the architectural proposals that came through, them talked about the need for swing space, and some have already started to talk about a three-story building. So, there's just really no room, I thought, naively, that, you know, that the, the fields would be an option, but clearly, building on the fields is not an option, so there really is no room. And to have the superintendent's office competing for space in that building, I think, is not a good plan. I, I mean, from my perspective, Lynch isn't really a good option. Because I think it, I think it could potentially get in the way of building, the building that we want to build for our kids at the elementary level. Take carriage house, separate and apart from the carriage house, but Lynch is an option to me, as I see it, I think is gonna be competing for viable, for, for valuable space that we should not be competing for. Especially if we're talking about a third, a third, potential third story.
So, so I can appreciate what you're saying, but I guess, you know, if, if swing space is the issue, why wouldn't it be more cost-effective, and if we have no long-term plan for Parkhurst after 2025, why, why wouldn't it be more effective to move out central office, rent office space while the construction is being completed, and then move back into Parkhurst?
I have an answer for that. So if we go back to the document that we prepared in our lengthy development for the operating and capital override that passed a couple of years ago, we developed a, we looked at our VFA facilities database to tell us what the capital needs are in our, in our district buildings, Rich. Parkhurst has $15 million of renewal and replacement costs coming over the next 10 years. That's largely because the building has been mothballed twice, it was used as swing space for VO, we put a million bucks into it to get it up and running. And then it was also used as swing space. And then it was also used as swing space for Ambrose after similarly been being abandoned for a while. The roof at Parkhurst is sheet rubber over two layers of shingles that no other building had is like that in the country. And even the roofer said to Pete Lawson, there's no warranty, don't call me when this fails. It, there are elements of Parkhurst that are like Band-Aids and duct tape. Because and and not necessarily the wrong decision to make at the time, because we just needed Parkhurst for a short term, two years for Ambrose, so we could build an Ambrose. And then we literally put it to sleep for a few years. And then we brought it back and we put a few more dollars into it so we could use it for VO. But we've never really made the proper investments. Parkhurst has some serious needs for building envelopes and systems that I think the school committee would really struggle with. Because in in other words, if you, if you, let's say, at one point down the line, if if central office were at the carriage house, you need a new roof, that's going to cost X. But if if we're at Parkhurst, what's a new roof at Parkhurst cost? Four X, five X? Because it's huge, it's twenty eight thousand square feet.
Rich, do you have any other questions?
I think we're talking about housing seventeen to twenty staff members. Do we see central office growing over the next three years?
But that includes space for three unassigned stations.
Right, so we have room in there. And to answer your question, this, no, I don't see central office growing.
And then my final question is just being someone that goes to Ambrose on a daily basis. How, what is the plan for parking? I mean, I know you've mentioned there's space to lease over there. But I mean, you talk about a tight area. You know, what what do you envision for parking?
Want me to take that?
Yeah, just quickly.
So there is an area of Rich, the master plan looked at parking actually right in front of Sanborn House as a concept. Some members of the historical commission, including a former Ambrose PTO co-chair, helpfully said that probably is going to disturb the historic landscape, and she was right. We went back to the lease that you guys actually agreed to with the society that town meeting approved. There's a parcel of land sort of on the back of the Sanborn House down the hill a little bit that's been pre designated for for parking. Our concept, and you you'll see this if you go back and watch the presentation at the high school, is to sort of build a a second lot, a little bit lower back there that can accommodate this need. What we learned, though, over the summary meeting with the historical society is they had on their own already hired an architect, a landscape architect, to see what they might come up with. And it's actually in the bound same area described by the lease, but a very different concept. It actually provides for more parking, which is great. We just pledge with them that should this move forward in design development, Rich, this will be one of the most important things is to study this a little more carefully, not just the parking, but you know, the roadway. Where where are cars going? What does the turn look like? And that we would engage with the Ambrose community as well on that. We need to do that so we can really put a firmer number to what that will cost.
Chris, as I understand it from watching the presentation, that this is this is an area sort of where the Ambrose garden is.
That's right.
And you would have cars accessing that through the existing entrance off of Church, that's Church Street, whatever it is there.
That's right.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a new curb cut and it would, you know, just be further behind the existing parking where the where the garden is.
We did look at additional curb cuts. The gray just doesn't work.
So so just trying to envision this, so would we be cutting into that hill and and they'd be accessing it through Cambridge Street?
No.
No.
How much, how much impervious surface would that add to the hill?
Could be very little, Mariano, if we go with pervious asphalt, which is certainly what I would recommend. We've got many different material, you know, so there's the area. But then the second question is, what's the materials? We got a lot of options for material that can control impervious surfaces.
And and how much area would it take? Because I know that the hill is used for recreation in the winter.
Yes, although we're not talking about sort of right in front, we would not affect in any way all of the snow slutters, my daughter included. I'd have to go back and do the math on it for you to give you an actual square footage. It would be kind of similar to the lot that's there today, a little bit bigger, but not terribly so. And and the garden that Susan just mentioned would not be sort of raised and lost. That the the estimates that are actually included in the project cost include taking that sort of apart, preserving those pieces, and then just relocating the garden. So the kids.
Mike, you had your hand up before, you have a question?
Thanks, Susan. Actually, a lot of my questions were were answered already. But thank you to the members of the school committee and Dr. Hackett for being here. And I think Mr. Nardone and Mr. Vo and Arvindian appreciate all your work on this. You know, I'm certainly supportive of the project to the degree that this is the recommendation from the the schools. So if this is what you need, we got to figure out a way to to do it. You know, I'm a little concerned going out for a separate debt exclusion override to make sure that we can make the case to to residents that this is necessary and, you know, our enrollment is is pushing us in this direction. And if this is the the building that that works, and you know, it seems like it's a, it's a good idea to me. It's, you know, you kind of kill two birds with one stone with preserving an historic asset as well. So if if the schools feel like this is the right project, then certainly would be supportive. And I I still have a lot more questions than answers, but I I think that's part of the design and development process that we would be, you know, engaged with at this point. So, you know, we've we've been moving along with this project and it's been tied up for several years. But this seems like it's what the schools are are recommending. And certainly I would be supportive of that.
Mariano, Rich, anything else? I'm, I would, I would echo what Mike said. I mean, this, this goes back a long time. And I'm glad that a thorough investigation of the existing conditions at the carriage house has been done. I'm, you know, reassured that it really is salvageable. And it's, it sounds like you've, Tepay has really done a great job. And I can really understand more thoroughly why, you know, we we agonized over this a bit during the whole facilities master plan discussion years ago. And, you know, it it does seem to make the best sense to have a permanent home for the central office and for Parkhurst to, you know, be available for a new Lynch project, Morocco project. In in the interim, we could lease that space out. I remember Judy Evans talking about how there are collaboratives and other people, possibly the Chinese language school. Chinese, the School of Chinese Culture might want to use that space. There are, there are takers for that space until we, you know, have to make a more permanent decision about whether it's if it comes another elementary school or if it comes something else. So I, you know, I would support what you're proposing to support the carriage house as a permanent home, makes sense to me. But we have to move on. Thank you for all your hard work and for spending so much time on this and explaining it all to us. And you will stay tuned. I know you're going to be voting on this, the school committee will be voting on tomorrow night.
And Susan, memos that we have on enrollment associated with housing that Rich was asking about. What's the best way to convey that information to your board?
I would send it to to Rich and to the town manager's office and we'll distribute it.
Okay, we'll do it. Get that out tomorrow.
Thank you all.
Thank you, nice to meet you, everybody.
Yes, nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm looking at my agenda and I realized that I skipped the Comcast Thompson Road project, which is something that we've talked, we talked about in January. And I believe is is moving forward rather quickly now. And I think Jay and Beth might have something to update us on and that us and the public.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, you're absolutely correct. This was done, the public hearing was done in January two thousand twenty one. It's been a long time working with this contractor. What they're going to do is a section of Main Street and Thompson Street install two four inch PVC conduits for a distance of approximately three hundred two feet between fault at five fifty two and six, five sixty four Main Street. And the other section of Thompson Street is from number two to number thirty two Thompson Street. We met with the contractor this past week and we told him how important was to notify all the residents. He did send pamphlets out, notices the other day. I'm also going to make sure they get a second one Friday, just to make sure that we didn't miss anyone, because I know how important it is. We wanted to make sure it didn't really affect the businesses, and that's why we came up with the nine o'clock at night timeframe. The pipe is only going out like eighteen inches. They feel like they can do it pretty quickly. But I know they had a few days of work with from start to finish with the digging, then the paving. This is part of the, due to the construction of the MBTA train station, they have to bring this pipe down to halfway down Thompson Street and a section of Main Street.
Just quickly, I wanted to clarify that the work is proposed from nine PM to five AM. Jay, I think it was October third through October eighth, unless they can do it quicker, which we all hope they will.
Have extra time just in case of weather or whatever, but that's correct, yeah.
Yeah. So we will, they'll get the approval from the police chief that's required for work outside of our normal hours. But we thought it was important to update the board. And as Jay said, they've notified the residents and they'll continue to do another notification. But we want to make sure the board was aware and see if you had any concerns.
I would, I would only point out that in the materials that that I've seen, there is a very good map that shows where the, you know, the area that's being impacted, it is Thompson Road, Thompson Street, Thompson Street, Thompson Road.
Yeah.
I forget whether it's a road or a street.
Street, Thompson Street, yeah.
Okay, Thompson Street. And there are people who live on that, in that area above some stores, I believe. And I I think Jay, you said you'd be, you know, you're really seeking them out and making sure that they get the information as well.
And definitely there's some more residents on the Locatella side also.
Okay, yeah, they're impacted as well, yeah, all right. Any questions from anyone? Right, none, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us to the Waterfield Task Force. I'd like to do that next, an update on that and some discussion about just, just kind of like the the plans and trajectory for that. I think Lisa was going to update us because she's been handling and assisting the task force, handling those meetings and assisting the task force so far.
Thank you, Susan. The task force has been having robust conversations. We added two working meetings, one last Friday and one this Wednesday, in addition to their meeting on Thursday, which was supposed to be a report writing meeting. It was brought up on the Friday meeting that the task force would like more time. There was a split decision, so there wasn't anything definitive. So I'd like to recommend that the board consider a a two week extension. So instead of the September thirtieth deadline is to add, you know, two weeks to that date and give the task force more time to put together a robust report.
Yeah, so if, I mean, if everything, everybody's okay with it, I'll make the motion, we can discuss. I move that we change the deadline for the final report from the task force to October thirteenth.
What day of the week is that, thirteen?
That's Friday, Friday, October thirteenth. That's two weeks after September thirtieth.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I went, I went backwards on my calendar. I guess let's do Friday, October fifteenth. I was looking at my August calendar.
Margaret, if I may, the reason why I had it on a Thursday is so that we could actually include it in the select board agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that it would be ready for the fifteenth and then on your agenda the eighteenth.
So I move that we change the deadline then to Thursday, October fourteenth.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Can we have a little discussion? I was just going to point out that, you know, I I've attended some of the sessions and they do discuss things and work pretty hard as they go along. And I just, you know, would want them to understand that, you know, we don't expect them to come up with a sort of comprehensive fix. You know, it'd be great if there were like five things we could, they they could recommend that we negotiate with Civico that would, you know, just be a comprehensive fix for the project and make it, you know, achieve all the goals. I know some of the people on this task force are used to being able to do that, and it must be frustrating. We're only asking for them to issue some findings and make some suggestions. Recommendations are essentially suggestions. There would be a lot of value in just some findings. You know, let's not neglect those, because I think those could be a real basis for better communicating and uniting the, all the committees and, and, you know, town, town meeting and all the, and the finance committee and the select board and all of us who are are working on this. We would hope in a collaborative way, you have to have a shared set of facts and this task force could help us move, you know, toward that goal. And that, you know, I just want them to know that they shouldn't expect to be, you know, coming up with with the one fix it plan. And, you know, we really appreciate their efforts, even if, you know, it's if it's less than perfect, you know, it doesn't have to be a perfect report. But I understand that they want, they want to do it right. And I think it's only realistic to give them some additional time.
Yeah, Susan, if I may, I know that, you know, from watching the the meetings that the task force has been having, I know that there's some people who are ready with their reports. And so there might be some frustration that we are pushing the the timeline. I know that there's folks who are not ready with the reports and they want it an extra month. And so I think the two weeks is a compromise. I think we, you know, we're trying to get to a result where, you know, we had a pretty contentious special election. And we're we're trying to get to a result where everybody feels like that they are being heard. And so that's, that's why I'm okay with the with the two week extension that is, you know, being recommended as a compromise. And that we do have a timeline to then negotiate with Civico as this board and and then see if, you know, I don't know if we want to talk about town meeting now, but or if we want to just move forward with the with the two week extension right now.
Well, there's a motion. About town meeting if we can, and if everybody feels comfortable with it. And, you know, again, I'm supportive of the two week extension. So I think we just need to kind of manage expectations with the, with everyone that's been watching this closely and the hard work of the task force. And what is expected going into town meeting, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have some things that we had, you know, had planned to do and that we've, you know, said publicly that are important to do. We certainly want to be sure that the finance committee has enough time to understand the next, you know, the the contract that we, that we do negotiate with Civico. I know Civico has a lot of things that they have to do after there's a concrete, after there's a contract and after it's approved by town meeting to get this project moving. They have to get, you know, they have to do their site investigations. They have to design the project and they have to get their permits. And there's a lot to do in a small period of time, because they cannot apply for any of the state subsidies until they have all that lined up. So we do want to maintain the momentum and not extend things too much. And I think we need to talk about, you know, understanding when a town meeting will approve this. It's beginning to look like we would need a special town meeting after fall town meeting, again, just to be realistic. But I I think, you know, we're, we're trying to work together and and make this happen, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think either way, whether it's full town meeting or a special town meeting, it's going to be a whole night of discussion at town meeting, right? So I think that if we, if we can schedule a special town meeting. I think that if we, uh, if we can schedule a special town meeting for. Early December. It gives us time to make sure that the process is done.
It gives us time to make sure.
Should we, um, should we? Uh, should we go ahead and vote then? Everybody comfortable voting at this point on this extension?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanna echo what my colleagues have said, and I appreciate everyone's comments, um, you know, this is a process and it's playing out and. We just gotta keep it moving and, um, we'll get, we'll get there.
Okay. So, uh, a roll call vote, uh, Mike.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Mariano.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Lisa, and I, I know that there is a meeting coming up, uh, very soon. Let's just march through this, I believe we should do the traffic review committee recommendations. I skipped that, and I hope Beth is still ready to go, this, I hope will not take long, these, these, these people, a lot of these. Traffic review TRC recommendations have been waiting a long time, so it's got a backlog of these, let's, let's try to get through some of these.
It's gonna move, move you guys over so you're not in my view here of the spreadsheet, um, so yeah, as, as Susan said, there's, uh. We've had a little bit of a backlog, we're trying to run through these quickly, um, the way I prioritize this on the list are, um, items that I think are. Easy enough that we could just go forward with the select board vote, items that we probably, uh, wanna have a hearing on unless the board is comfortable, um, voting it, and then just the white items that I'm not even gonna go over tonight, if you have. Those are just recommendations that we didn't feel like what required support action, so if you have questions on those, um, feel free to, to reach out and, um, contact me. Um, so the first one this list, I think, is very easy, um, anyone who's turned out of the Morocco parking lot, uh, knows that there's a right turn only sign. Where Bates Road comes out onto Washington Street, currently that sign is basically no return only, so twenty-four seven, that should really, um, a request of the neighbor was to revise that to. Monday through Friday, seven AM to three PM, which I think makes sense based on the school hour, so, um. Our TRC's recommendation is that, um, that change be implemented, and I think we can go for just a select for a vote if everyone's comfortable with that. Do you, Susan, you want me to run through all these, or you wanna just take them as, take votes as they come?
Maybe we should, um, just take votes as they come, um, so, you know, I would be in support of that, that's pretty simple. We need a motion, thank you.
I, I make a motion to adopt, uh, the Bates Road right hand turn only suggestion as Beth just indicated.
Uh, roll call vote, Mike.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Mariano.
Yes.
Um, the next one is, uh, item seventeen, so there was a recommendation actually made by, um, Sergeant Perrinak, who is center retired. Uh, to install a do not enter sign on Holland Street at Spur Street, so this is basically right behind the loading dock, um, at the Winchester High School. Um, so it was do not enter between eight AM and eight thirty AM, um, towards congestion and turning movements during morning drop-off. Uh, this is one I probably recommend, um, we have a public hearing on just because of it impacts kind of the flow through the neighborhood, and I know Mariano, you had brought up, um, the other week. Some, the concept of some kind of one-way circulation there, so I think this is one I would recommend for a wider neighborhood and public hearing if, if everybody is comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think this, this would impact a lot of people, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, and the next one, um, item twenty-one, uh, we had a request, um. From the two nursing facilities on Swanton Street for the installation of a crosswalk. Um, somewhere between Loring Avenue and Cedar Street, so we had a couple of different requests made by, um, both the private resident and then, um, the, the nursing facilities. Uh, TRC did discuss this and we recommend the installation of new crosswalk just east of the driveway to the village, um, so again, I, I'm not sure if this is one that the board. Would prefer to have a public hearing, if you're comfortable just moving forward the vote on this, um, hopefully, uh, not super controversial issues, I'm open to either.
I mean, that def, that area definitely needs a crosswalk, so, um, I'd be supportive of either as well.
Yeah, I, I, I could see why you would need a crosswalk there.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of people I think that work at both facilities.
Right.
Go between the two.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, and the closest crosswalk is not very close.
Not very close, no.
So, um, I, I move that we, um, install a crosswalk at, uh, the location as recommended by the TRC.
Uh, roll call vote, uh, Mike.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Mariano.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you, so I'll just put a caveat on that, that, um, with that approval to get added to the DPW list, so it might not appear, um, you know. Soon, I, I'm not sure where they are in terms of, um, curb cuts and that type of thing, but it'll, it'll definitely be on their list, uh, for future projects.
Right now, I mean.
And right now, it doesn't matter.
November, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, uh, yeah, then the roads closed, so, um, okay, uh, the next one, um, the board. Has received requests, uh, a couple of different requests for the installation of a sidewalk on Ridge Street from Buckman Drive to the Uber Line. Um, TRC did recommend that a sidewalk be, uh, installed in this area on the west side of Ridge Street and DPW is currently evaluating options. So I'm not sure, um, if the board wants to take a vote or you wanna wait till we get a, um. We get some further information from DPW about, uh, what it would take to install a sidewalk out there, but they are definitely, uh, Jay's moving forward with investigating that further.
Again, this one seems kind of obvious, obvious need to me, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, there's so many walkers, right, to, uh, to VO in that area that, um. I just, you know, if there's. If there's no, you know, if DPW is still evaluating options, I'm not sure what we would be approving.
That's true.
Just the concept, I think, uh, and, you know, with details to be worked out, if you'd rather have a better, um, plan, we can have Jay come in, um, once he has a little bit more information about what it would look like. If you'd, if you'd rather wait till that time.
Yeah, also, how does it affect the project that is going on right now at that intersection, at the intersection of, uh, Johnson and Ridge, does it?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would, um, it'll be far enough away that it won't have a impact on what they're doing now.
Okay, so, uh, I move that we, um, recommend a sidewalk be added in the area, um, west, um, on the west side of Ridge Street. But that, uh, DPW, uh, that come report to the board if, uh, if anything different is, is recommended after evaluating all the options.
Now, second, it, you know, just say that, um, you know, I, I think we've been looking to do something in this area for a long time and, you know, um, you know, the. Kind of school years come and go and, um, there's, uh, very high speed coming through that, um, area and, um, it, it's a pretty wide intersection, so, um. Uh, in, in addition to a crosswalk could be, um, uh, or a sidewalk, uh, I, I think, you know, any other recommendations that. DPW could make sooner than later would be, um, would be helpful, so, thanks. That was a second, by the way.
Okay. So, roll call vote, uh, Rich.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Mariano.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you, um, the next one is, um, a request to install stop signs on Central, Central Street where it intersects with Rangeley Road. Um, TRC, the, the, the folks who made this request, um, prefer a three-way stop at that location. Um, TRC just recommends a stop sign on Rangeley Road where it intersects with Central Street, this is one that I recommend a public hearing for cuz I do think it's probably worth the neighborhood conversation. In terms of what they see out there and what the recommendation should be. Unless there's any questions, I'll move on to the next one.
That sounds fine, yep.
Okay, um, so the next one is the request, uh, for the installation of a no parking sign on Kendall Street. Opposite the driveway for number ten, uh, Kendall Street's a very narrow road, um, and the, the resident allocation, um, stated they had a hard time backing out of the driveway when there were vehicles parked. On the opposite side of the street, uh, TRC did support this request, um. Uh, this one, I, I leave it up to the board whether you wanna just vote it or have some sort of notification, obviously, the person who lives across the street. Might not be aware of this request, I'm just sensitive to that, but, um, you know, that they, if, if we, um. If we vote it, that we have some sort of notification process for them, or that we have a hearing where they can, their input can be considered.
I mean, I would go with a hearing where we notify.
Yeah.
The neighbors across the street, right, nine, seven, eleven.
Yep.
Who would be impacted.
That's good. Um, okay, um, the last one on this page is Fairview Terrace, which I think, uh, Susan, you might have gone out to this street, um, towards the beginning of last school year, Fairview Terrace is, uh, right next to the McCall School. And so there was a request from the neighbors for no parking standing signage Monday through Friday, seven AM to four PM, sort of at the beginning of the street, uh, towards, um. Towards Main Street, um, so this one, I think, TRC was supportive of this request and, uh, I think I can go forward, just a select board vote this time.
Okay, I move that we approve the, um, no parking standing Monday through Friday, seven to four PM signage at the beginning of Fairview Terrace as, uh, the TRC recommended.
Uh, roll call vote, Mike.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Mariano.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Two left, we're almost there.
Okay.
Um. Um, the resident at, um, three twenty-six Washington Street has requested an on-street handicap parking space in front of his property. Um, this is kind of an interesting request, we, we tried to do a little digging between myself and the police department, we're not aware of any other. Handicap spaces that are marked on-street, um, outside of the town center, so we felt like this is sort of a policy decision for the select board. This drive, this house does have a driveway, um, I'm happy to pull up a map if that would be helpful for folks to see. Um, I think they did have some, some concerns, um, with mobility of residents of their, of their property in terms of being able to get in and out, uh, which is why they were requesting this. Um, but as I said, uh, trying to leave the emotional piece out of it, um, you know, we don't, we don't, we, we haven't typically or really ever that I'm aware of marked handicap spaces. On-street in front of residential properties, so I felt like this is one, um, for the board to, to kind of take, uh, a policy stance on, so we can set, uh, going forward, if we get these types of requests, we can kind of have a. You know, a policy that we would follow. If the board's not comfortable making the decision this evening, we could get asked for, uh, an input from, uh, T-TAC, if that's something you were interested in.
No, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm kinda torn on this one, um, I, I, I understand, you know, the needs of, uh. People with mobility issues, um, you know, my dad had, you know, went from being. As able as anybody to not being able, and I know it's, it's, uh, it's something that is, um, you know, could strike any of us at any time. I, I would feel better about having a policy though and making these decisions.
I'm comfortable with putting a space there, I mean, now, we, we, if, you know, the policy changes or the resident, you know, moves, I mean, we can, you know, kind of undo that as well, but, um. It, it is a little concerning, um, that there are no other on-street, you know, spaces, especially when you think about the winter and, um, you know, what, what has to happen for residents that. Um, need those spaces, um, if they've gotta, you know, walk really far in, in the snow or how, you know, however they're accessing, um, that area, if, if their mobility is, uh, is impaired, so. Um, certainly, um, it might take us a little while to put a policy together, but in the meantime, I don't mind if we. Put a spot there.
Is it for a specific license plate, like I know other cities and towns do where it's for a specific license plate number?
Um, I'm not sure, it would just be my, uh, we could do it again, since we don't, we haven't done it before, we could do it however you want. Um, my, I was just envisioning that the DPW would mark out a blue space like we have, uh, in a town center, um, and then it would be open to anybody with a handicap plate. Um, but if you wanted to make it more specific, um, to that property owner, somehow we could do that as well.
I, I mean, if, if, right, if the concern is that that property owner, you know, to access their property, right, we would wanna limit it to that property owner, but.
Yeah, it's, so that section of Washington Street, um, there's not much commercial in that area, so I don't think, um, there's not too much of a concern of other, you know. Is, you know, folks go into a business in that area that might occupy the space, so I think it's pretty likely to be only used by that resident.
And what would happen in the winter when there's a parking ban, uh, due to plowing?
Um, I, I imagine that would include any, um, you know.
Wouldn't include that.
Ban on, yeah, like I said, they do have a driveway, so it's not like they have to, the, the only parking is on-street, um, there is the ability to, to move cars off-street.
Yeah, so I, I move that we approve, uh, this request as printed.
Thank you.
Uh, roll call vote, Mike.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Mariano.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, but I, I would ask that we, you know. Maybe you could talk with T-TAC, maybe, maybe this isn't just an engineering, uh, question, but just some kind of policy, so it would help us, you know, make these decisions if, if more of them come up.
Yep, absolutely. Um, and then the last one, just a quick one, I think, um, so over the years, we've gotten a lot of concerns, um, from residents on Pond Street, um, I'm sure we've all driven Pond Street and. Gone too fast, it's one of those roads where it feels very narrow, but still you look down and you're always going, uh, you know, faster than you. In the speed limit posted, so, um, there's a variety of concerns, I think most of them are probably best addressed by a corridor study, I know there's been a policy set by the select board about trying to. Incorporate traffic-related items, um, with respect to school projects, and I think this would be a good one where we can maybe expand, um, a little bit the scope of any. Uh, transportation, um, studies that are done as part of a little school project to look up and down that corridor at things that could be done to improve, um, safety. Um, the, the one, easy one here to vote on, um, was to vote on a no-truck signage at the intersection, uh, of Pond Street and Cambridge Street, and then up on Street and the Uber Line. So if, if the board's comfortable with that, that could be a vote that we would take this evening.
So where would the no-truck signage go?
Um, so there would be one at the intersection, basically where the gas station is at the intersection of Pond Street and Cambridge Street, and the other one would be at the Wupert Line. Where Pond Street becomes Lake Avenue.
So, so wait, we're banning trucks from that area of the roadway?
So there was, um, there was some correspondence that the, from the people who wrote this saying that that sign used to be there. Um, and so we went back, I went back kind of through Google Earth as far as I could go and didn't see a previous sign, I did talk to Sergeant Bachelor, um, and he wasn't aware. So. TRC's recommendation was to install that sign, um, because of Pond Street is a, a narrow road, um, if it warrants for the discussion with the board, we can certainly, um, bring it back to another meeting.
I, I don't know if I feel comfortable.
I, I think, let me pull up, I think there might be a no-truck sign at, um. Lake Ave and Washington Street, let me see if I can pull that up. Or Lake Avenue Main Street.
I guess that's why you're pulling that up, my only concern with putting this sign in right now is all the construction we're doing, including the eventual closing of the Lake Street Bridge. Might reroute.
Sure.
Different people to different streets, so I just. That's my concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like the construction at Lynch, right, when we redo Lynch, is that gonna send all the construction trucks to Middlesex Street and.
Right.
Sure.
And that neighborhood by the brook. Right, um, so that, that would be one of my concerns, uh, you know, in addition to. How are the field trucks going to get to Speedway at that corner, but, um.
Yeah, so actually, there isn't an existing, uh, for some reason, I thought there was on Lake Avenue. That's fine, we're not interested in moving forward with that, at this time, we can always reconsider it, uh, later.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm a little puzzled by this as well, I mean. I know nobody likes to have a, you know, trucks, uh. interacting with pedestrians and schoolchildren pedestrians, I just, I'm not sure that this is feasible.
Yeah, and we'll do a little bit more digging and see if I can find any historic information about that signage being there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth.
Susan, if I could just jump in quickly, I, I hate to, at this hour, move backwards through the agenda, but I think there was some confusion around our vote for the transfer station commercial fees, so I think that it seemed like that the increase in the commercial rate was going to lower the amount that the, we would use from the capital stabilization or building stabilization fund on the capital side, but I, I don't know if that's what we intended, I mean, it seemed like we, our efforts have been to kind of lower the impact on residents, so we started off with being somewhat comfortable with a hundred and seventy thousand dollar request from the stabilization fund for the, for the nine-year period, but but, you know, with increasing the commercial fee, I think that maybe the representatives from, from capital, maybe we, we presented it this way, that it was going to lower their, their funding of it, rather than lower the, the residents' sticker fees, so, and maybe Mark can weigh in on that as well, if he's here, or I don't think Jimmy or Roger are still here, but just some confusion to clear up.
If I, if I could, yes, there, there was a little confusion, I got a couple text messages on it that, and I think what Jay was hoping was that the commercial revenue would possibly, you know, lower the cost for the residential sticker maybe in the out-years, I think he was thinking, you know, and I know the thirty-seven thousand, I think, was going to be effective January of twenty-two, but I think he was thinking, and I think he touches on this in his memo, that he was hoping that he might be able to adjust some of the commercial rates to, you know, soften the impact, you know, on the residential side, you know, in, in the out-years, so I think that's maybe what caused the confusion, but I don't, I don't know if this helps or, or not, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think what we voted is the, the residential, the sticker price starting in January of twenty-twenty-two. Yeah. And the twenty-two dollar surcharge on the residential in twenty-three. And then we also moved that we would, and I have, I have the motion here, that we recommend the use of transfer station revenue and stabilization fund revenues for debt service and other costs, and review this intention annually to allow for proactive planning on this project, so we didn't commit to reducing that hundred and seventy thousand dollar with the commercial, but knowing that the commercial will help us either reduce the eighty-dollar increase that we're staring down in twenty-twenty-four. Or a combination thereof, right, and, I mean, the reality is, the reason we didn't vote on a number for twenty-twenty-four is because we are in fall of twenty-twenty-one, like, there's no way that we will know today what the exact number is going to be then, but I agree with Mike, that I think most of that increase should be to reduce the impact on residents, especially since we're taking away, you know, the SMART program.
Well, thanks, I think that helps clarify things, and especially for the capital meeting this week, just wanted to make sure that we, everybody knew where they were, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mark and Mike. So I'm thinking we should talk about the, the MBTA train station project and the bid.
All right, this is the memo that I included in the packet, I'm just gonna, because it's late hour, I'll jump to the point, so this particular chart is one that was sent by Nathan Ray, the project manager, to me on, I can't remember if it was Thursday or Friday of last week. But essentially, there are four items that the town voted to allocate two hundred and forty thousand dollars towards at the twenty-twenty town meeting. Couple of nuances here, they, they were bid separately, except for number three, the irrigation system. They actually did not, they, they developed the specifications, but they did not include it in the bid, so it actually is not on the table right now, and it will have to be negotiated with the contractor in the future. The two projects at the number one and two that are relatively smaller dollar amounts came in under budget, painting was significantly under budget, and the, the granite cladding of the the new pier and the quill rotary, and then the bridge abutment on Waterfield Road came in just under budget. The biggest issue is number four, which is the installation of the salvage stone on the outer face of the ramp along Laraway Road. I received the actual bid set from Nathan that shows these different sections. Certainly a very visible part of the project, something that we had, we had pushed for. Unfortunately, the estimate was eighty thousand, and it came in at three hundred and forty-one thousand. The way the procurement works is that this is an ad alternate, so if it's, if it's rejected, it can't be added back, but it can be accepted as part of the bid and then taken out later. The contract agreement that the town has with the MBTA does say that upon thirty days of notification of any cost estimate overrun by five percent or more, so clearly, number four is way more than five percent. The town has thirty days to decide whether to keep it in and try to fund the ex, the excess or to take it out. If the MBTA does not hear back from us in that thirty days, then they will automatically take that out. That thirty-day clock, I believe, started with a notification last week, so that would have been the twenty-second. The, you know, there's a few options for the town to consider. So with the two hundred and forty thousand to complete all three of these pieces now, we need approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than what was allocated at town meeting. The sixty-five thousand, we would have to also find that money if we want to continue with that project, but that could happen much later. I've been in contact with Senator Lewis's office. I think the, the funding, it's unlikely that they could find funding for the two hundred and fifty thousand, I'm because it's a smaller amount and there is more lead time, I'm, I'm hoping that they can help us with the sixty-five thousand. You know, a couple months down the road, and we have to negotiate that project, but with the extra two hundred and fifty thousand, that will require the select board weighing in on whether we want to move forward with that or not. I have reached out to the MBTA Design Working Group, and we've set up a meeting for Thursday for them to review and make a recommendation, so certainly the board can you know, start to indicate their preference tonight and give us some direction. I did contact Katie Chloe from the MBTA, she wrote back to me today that they were looking for a decision either in the next week to try to get it on the, on the next MBTA Oversight Board Agenda, which is a bit confusing, because my understanding is as of today, that board doesn't exist, so I did hear that the five members that are to be appointed by Baker supposedly will be appointed any day now, but we've been waiting eight weeks actually for that, so I'm not exactly sure what that, that timing is, but if we waited till the October Board Meeting, that would be, I think, late October, that would obviously give us more time. Anything later would put the project in jeopardy in terms of timing, so you know, sort of a, a quick turnover in terms of trying to get a decision, I think by the October fourth meeting. And then the longer term, if we have a little bit more time, would be for the October MBTA meeting. But either, either option, the, obviously, if we're asking for a town meeting to fund that extra two hundred and fifty thousand, town meeting doesn't start till November first. My, my conversations with the MBTA are along the lines of, if we have an indication from the select board that this is something that they want to sponsor and push forward, then that would be sufficient for them to include in the bid, and then be able to take it out later if funding falls through. I did see, Beth, you had your hand up, I'm not sure if you have anything else to add.
No, I was just going to ask that question that you just answered about, because obviously we can't make town meeting timeline work in that thirty days, so, but you answered it, thank you.
I'm supportive of a request to town meeting to stick with this plan and fund what is needed additionally, so.
Anybody else? I apologize if I don't see a hand raised, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'll just, this is, Beth, just
Yeah.
A little bit of history, the, the piece that came in the highest in, in that table is, I think, the one that the working group had always felt was the most important. So that's the salvage stone along Laraway Road. So, yeah, I would agree that that's kind of a critical part of the element of the design and the look of that station when it's finished, thank you.
Yeah, and that, you know, Laraway Road is very visible from the town common, from that whole area of downtown. You know, we're gonna, this train station is going to be right there in our town center for decades, and this is an important, just, you know, visual element to make the new portion blend in with the old portion, and I would be in support of you know, making a town meeting request for this one.
Yeah, I, I will add that, you know, in addition to, to, to those reasons why it's, why we should do this, I also think that so many people have been involved in this project, and as Beth said, this was one of the most, if not the most important thing that most people involved talked about, that we should have town meeting make this decision, rather than this board just deciding no, so so I fully support putting it on a town meeting warrant.
I agree.
Do you need a vote, or?
I, I think we're ready to vote now.
Yeah, I, I think supporting, putting on the town meeting warrant would be sufficient for me to indicate to the MBTA to move forward with it.
Okay, so I move that we ask the town manager's office to place a warrant article for a town meeting to support the the MBTA project difference as presented.
I'm sorry, can I be clear that it's the, it's not just the two hundred and fifty thousand, do you want to add in the sixty-five thousand for the irrigation system? So it'd be three hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I think it seems unlikely that we're going to be able to, you know, clawback funds for that at this point, right, I mean.
Yep.
I mean, that was another, I mean, a, a lot of these, you know, ad alternates from the town side that we took on, you know, as we're kind of saying here, we had to carve out a lot of the things that we wanted, so the things that are left are the things that I think we felt were really necessary, so this one's there. If we can get money, work with their delegation, great, if not, you know, this is what we've been experiencing, I mean, this is a, you know, these, these costs jumping up are are high, but it's not completely shocking from what we've been seeing lately.
Yeah, I'm okay with including everything that's on this table, including getting the nineteen thousand dollars back from the other two.
And the, I mean, the irrigation, now is the time to put it in, because they're putting curving, edging, and everything around the planting beds, so trying to run that under brick sidewalks in the future is challenging.
Yeah, thank you, Beth, there's going to be sidewalks, and, yeah, you have to dig that up to put in irrigation, I think that seems crazy.
Now, now's the time to do it, for sure.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah, the motion is for both, or for all, everything on this table, yeah. For town meeting.
An amended motion, okay. And there is a second, right? Okay, so we'll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. So with that, let's, let's just quickly do the, the town moderator letter, and then we'll do the warrant articles, because I think the warrant articles are perhaps a little bit longer discussion. The, there's a, you know, a letter from the moderator requesting that we have town, fall town meeting held by remote participation. Town clerk had done a lot of research and tried to design an in-person town meeting in the town, in, in the high school auditorium, and we all had high hopes of getting back to an in-person town meeting, because it just runs better and the decision-making seems to be better, and we, we wanted have the, you know, best level of decision-making we can. But when the town, town was, or the town meeting members were, were surveyed, a significant number of them, I think eighty-three, said that they were not comfortable being in person in an auditorium, and so the town moderator felt it was necessary to, to just go back to the remote format. So she's asking for us to approve this letter and permit the remote format for fall town meeting.
So I move that we approve the requests from the town moderator to conduct Winchester's upcoming fall town meeting scheduled to commence November first, twenty-twenty-one, at seven PM through remote participation, as detailed on the letter from the moderator.
We'll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then we have the warrant articles, or all the articles on the warrant have been distributed, we have a sort of draft, I guess, a draft warrant with all the articles, with the standard ones first, and some placeholders. We know that some of the placeholders need some refinement, or maybe one of them might need to be moved to a special town meeting, or would need to be moved to a special town meeting, the one for Waterfields. I know the hour is late, but Mark is asking us to sort of run through these and be sure. Everything we need is on there, go ahead, Mark.
If I could, so it hasn't changed too much from when I reviewed it last week with the board. We, we have added, actually, I went ahead and added the MBTA article, kind of assuming that that's probably where the board would end up. The other thing that I just wanted to report on is placeholder number four, which is the River Street forty-B, we have good news to report, we actually received the traffic mitigation payment, which I believe was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and we received the sewer, like, I and I payment, I believe was around twenty thousand dollars. So that's, that's good news, so we actually have received those two payments under that article. The one that was added was when that, the chair asked me to add, was the number six under placeholder placeholders for the Saturday election. I don't know if there was anything, Susan, that you wanted to say on that one, at all.
Only that I, I, you know, spoken emailed back and forth with, with the town clerk, and she's supportive of it. She was going to put together a memo outlining the, the costs that her office had to come up with for the referendum election, which was held at the high school. And a Saturday election would make it more possible to have all the precincts vote at the high school like we did back in June for the referendum, and she thought that worked really well. And she would, you know, make that available to us, and, you know, come talk, and we could, you know, sort of refine what we're, you know, the rationale for, for, for asking for this change to the bylaw. The other part, the other part of that is that, you know, we, we need to talk with the schools, and she's going to work on getting together with interim superintendent Frank Hackett and discussing it, and you know, the previous superintendent was, was very interested in getting the, you know, not having voting. Not having voting in the elementary schools on a school day, um, which, which happens um with the town election because it's. It, it occurs in March and I, as the school calendar works, it just doesn't work around the school calendar to have a no school day. In March or to add a no school day in March. But anyway, there's, there's more, more work to be done, but um. You know, it's, it's, it's good to have it on the um, on the warrant already.
Yep, okay. And then um, just to mention briefly that we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. You know, we typically have a. Meeting prior to the town meeting where we get the chair of the finance committee, vice chair, chair of the select board, controller. Uh, town manager, myself and uh town clerk. I'm probably leaving someone off the list, but we have that meeting for Wednesday morning. Where we kind of run through all of the articles to see if we're missing anything, kind of a last call. The warrant has gone to town council. I've received a red line copy back from Mina. It still needs some adjustments. Before it'll be ready for the board's signature and vote for next uh Monday night. So we're right on schedule pretty much. And uh, I don't think there are any surprises really to highlight tonight anyway, so.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody have any questions? Oh, okay.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Um, so we have the consent agenda. And um. Patty has reassured me and clarified that if something is on the consent agenda, for example. Um, the request from the Crawford Methodist Church, you know, that all of the approvals or, you know. From different town departments and so forth, um, have been obtained, or the processing has been done. So I just uh, you know, asked for a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
Yeah, so moved.
Is there a second? Maybe Mike seconded it as you were even speaking. I don't know. Very quick. Okay, thank you.
Motion or whatever, doesn't matter.
Okay, um, so we need to have a roll call vote. Uh, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Please tell me if I've skipped something. I don't think I have. And um, I appreciate your patience with all of these things that, you know. Get added and come up and um, you know, there's just a lot, lot of work to be done and we're a busy town. And uh.
One, one thing is.
Yes, but.
The controllers report, I don't know if anybody had any questions in the controllers report. I didn't.
I didn't either. Um, I appreciate Stacy being here and Beth. Is, is there anything you wanted to flag for us on the controller's report?
No, I just figured I'd send it to you for some light reading.
No, it's, it's good to keep up, yeah. Thanks. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. Yeah, go ahead.
Again.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Lisa?
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Good luck with it, thank you, Lisa, thanks.
Good night, everybody.